We'd like to call the June study session to order. And we've got a lot to talk about tonight, so we want to get started, start it on time. Just so we can let the record show that all members were present accounted for at the year. And with that, if you would stand, we'll pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we need approval of the agenda, so I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
It's not moved.
Okay. Alina, your second?
I'm second.
Denise? So approval of the agenda is not?
Can I help?
No.
Okay.
Never mind.
Just kidding. Give me a chance.
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
You're on a roster.
I just wanted to make it so I could get this.
Thank you.
His team is inadequately protected.
This is a plastic top. It's fine.
Oh, my gosh, Tim. Trying to be helpful.
Oh, yeah.
Shut up.
If you like that.
I'm sure that was competent. Let's move on.
Okay, listen, we won the item 2.0, public comments. Any public comments? Great, thank you. We have no information items? Nope, I didn't think so. Moving on to 4.01, contracts, agreements, bids, and Ms. Embry.
Yes, she is.
Hello.
How are you?
I am awesome. And how are you this evening? Awesome.
You, Embry.
So this evening, we have 32 items. Originally, we had 33. One was pulled because the bids that came in fell under our threshold for posting. So that's good news overall. I do want to point out to you that we do have a number of items that have significant dollar thresholds, specifically the grocery area, groceries, dairy, bread. And please know that those have been bid, as is our usual routine. We post on the website. We reach out to knowing vendors and allow a 30-day window for the bids to come back. And these, the prices and the total amounts are consistent with our current year. So those are significant. Another item I would highlight for you is the Automated External Defibrillator, the AED. That is something that we had hoped to be able to bring forward either at the second June meeting or it would be at the one and only July meeting. We are revamping the specifications due to some of the questions that have come forward, and that could potentially be delayed, but I decided to leave it on here just for your awareness so that as we continue that journey, we'll keep you apprised of the progress on that. We've got a number of renewals that support the learning environment for our students. And if there are any specific questions, we'd be happy to answer those or defer to my teammates for assistance in doing so. Otherwise, these items will be posted for the next three weeks, this time since we've got a delayed second board meeting, and June 27th would be when we would seek approval on these items.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Embry?
Yes.
Denise?
I'll start with, and you know, it's something that we're always very conscious of on the board, and that is that we try to use local services as much as possible. So I think I asked this a couple of years ago, but I've asked again, the Harris Baking Company?
Yes.
That their contract that we're going to award, there, is there no local bakeries that applied for that?
Right, we did not. On that, we did not. Last year, we did have a local vendor provide a partial bid, but this time, this is who we received a bid from. And Harris is out of Arkansas.
That's okay. That's why, we have used them before.
We have, yes.
So that's as close as we can get.
That is correct. And some of these are a bit challenging. We are a very, very large school district, as we well know, so to provide weekly deliveries and sometimes daily deliveries, it's not cost conducive for firms or companies from out of our area to bid. So limits the market.
So just on the first three items there, you, the first one says that there was only one bid.
Right.
So it's pretty easy to pick that one, since there was only one bid.
Right.
And then the next two, it just said bids were received. So can you give us an idea of like how many bids there were?
Well, I can tell you that with regard to the bakery, there was a bid response, but it said no bid. So that basically means we had one bid for that. So we are, we are limited in our availability.
And are all three of those vendors, if you will, the same from last year?
I believe they are.
Or has there been change?
I believe they're the same. I definitely Springfield Grocery, I believe that they are. Okay.
Carol? With the, what is it, aggregate, 1,500 additional hotspots?
Yes.
What will that bring our total to?
Oh, I have that in my budget presentation.
I think it's 1,500.
Your first term?
1,500 total.
Thank you. 1,500 total, yes, thank you.
So we're at 850 this week?
Mm-hmm.
That was an additional 650.
Any other questions for Carol?
Can you clarify what you said about the, hold on, let me scroll down just a second. The AEDs?
Yes.
That you were getting some questions from board or from other people?
No, from, from a variety of potential responders to the bid.
Okay.
And it was enough that we determined that we need to take another look at the specifications and provide clarity within the specifications, release it, provide fair playing ground. Because if we do get questions during an RFP or a bid process, all of those responses then get posted on the website and provided.
Go to everybody.
Yeah. So this way, we'll retool the specifications, make sure that they hit, hit the mark, and then put it back out on the street.
And did that cost estimate change since last Thursday, from when we initially saw that?
No.
That's, that's the same?
That is the same.
Okay, for some reason I.
And again, it goes back to the number of sites that we have in order to provide an appropriate level in all of our facilities.
So this would allow us to have how many AEDs at how many sites?
Well, let me see if I have that within this packet. I don't know that I do, but I can certainly.
Two, one, 10.
Yeah, 110 in total. So, so for instance, at a high school, there may be five that are needed.
Okay.
Or there may be some unique buildings that require additional. So we looked at it from not only the size of the school that those would be supporting, but also if we placed only one in the gymnasium here, what would be the availability for other events that would occur, that type of thing.
Yeah.
There were some additionals.
Then, so I remember Jerry and I, we, this conversation's been going on for a long time, and the fire department was a part of that conversation, I don't know if you remember. So I'm thrilled to see us allocate resources to ensure that that is there because we know that to be a critical life-saving tool. And then I'm sure the next step is making sure we have enough people trained to use them.
Yes.
Step two, but, but, but yes, just I'm thrilled to see this.
We've actually already had training in place for quite some time. We just haven't.
Through the Health Services Department.
Health Services Department.
Yeah, great.
The initial impetus I remember was a student.
Yeah, I mean, I remember David Hall.
It was a student through Leadership Springfield Academy that was pushing to have AEDs and got some grants, and at Central, I think, is where it started, years, several years ago. But it's great, I'm glad that it's good.
So great questions. Continue to feed them my way over the next few weeks, and I will either answer them for you or connect you with someone who has all of the information.
If you have questions, let Carol know, and you will vote on that.
Yes, thank you.
June 27th, on all those.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, item 5.01, Board Policy. This is Board Policy, BDE, on school board vacancies, primary cleaning up language. If you have any questions.
It's just a first read, and it's MSBA's recommendation, so if you have questions that we can get answered or follow up on, we'd be glad.
Who wants to go first?
Go ahead, Denise.
Okay. Since we lived, several of us on the board lived through this.
That's right.
Long ago. I do like the language because it's a little bit tough to understand our, the last policy, but I do, trying to find it here. I do like the language in which it says that the Board of Education has the option of appointing a former board member. And then it goes, says the Board may elect to appoint a former board member in the event of a vacancy. And then it goes on to say, what you do in the case of two vacancies. So we have that option with this, but then it goes on below that to say, when it is the Board's responsibility to fill a vacancy, the following process will be used unless the Board votes to use a different process due to the timing. So is this, I guess what I want to be clear is if the Board chooses to fill that vacancy with a former board member, then do we still have to go through this process, or is this process no longer the notification, the interviews, the voting? So that's what I'd like clarification on. If the Board chooses to fill the position with a former board member that's willing to step up, say for a couple of months or a few months, and that decision has been made by the Board, then does that make the rest of this notification process?
No.
Yeah.
No, yeah.
So that's.
That's a great question.
My question. Because in reading that, it tells us we can do that, but then it goes on to tell us what our process has to be, our notification process.
So is the best way to handle that, to ask MSBA?
Yeah, I want their clarification.
I want them, I want to know what they intended.
I'm not going to read into my interpretation of their interpretation, so I'll pass that.
Great, thank you.
Even if we went to, if we were to appoint a former board member?
Then we'll get clarity from them.
Because it'd be nice if it says, and if the Board chooses not to appoint a former board member, here's the process.
I talked to them about this yesterday, but I didn't ask that question.
Okay.
That's a wicked question.
Thank you.
The way that reads in would imply that if you do that, you might do the rest of it.
That's what I'm hoping, but it doesn't exactly say that.
Can we get that before we have to vote, so we have time to think about it?
Thanks.
Did I tell them this week?
Because our preference is that it be either or, not either way. This is what you do. Is that what you're saying, Denise?
Yes.
Because one streamlines it.
We'd rather do that.
One streamlines, and that may not always be the appropriate way to go.
But we want the option.
But we want that option. It would have made things a lot easier for us last time.
Okay. The only concern I have there, it's not a concern, would be, that's not new language. That wasn't changed, that was in the old language too, the way we had it before. So that was, that's not a revision.
I think it's a revision.
But it's a clarification.
The second, the notification part of it is, but that part's not.
But we, we've actually updated this policy since the process that Denise is talking about.
Yes.
And if that language was a change after where we were before the last appointment happened. So it may not be a change on this, but it was a change.
That we made, and that we need to. Because this can be our own. We can't make this our own.
Sure we can.
So we want it. I think that's what we want to do. I don't know, but I guess.
To make sure the interpretations are clear.
Well, okay, so then let's back up. If we get clarification, and what they say is, in any case, this is the process, and we wish to present an alternative, would we present it as a second option when we vote next time? So we need to have that work done ahead of time? Okay, so that's good to know, that we need as much.
Be a language shift.
Yeah. Because we were intending an option, because we found ourselves in a difficult spot time last, and we want that option. That's why we want the option.
Yes.
And that's all right. They may be covering themselves with, may be used unless the Board votes to use a different process due to the timing of the vacancy. So they already have that language in here that says, all right, we're voting to use the other process that disnominates, that just appoints a current board member and leave it at that. But I want clarification. Is that their cover, or is it covered here?
Thank you.
Same, that's.
Okay. Any other questions on that?
Yes, yeah. So in the yellow highlighted, it says a second paragraph, in the case of resignation, blah, 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 in case of removal from office for excessive absences. So my question is, how are we defining excessive absences? And if you follow that sentence on, it says, certified that the board member has missed three consecutive meetings and the Board has not excused the absences. So are we defining excessive absences of a board member as missed, three missed consecutive meetings?
Unexcused.
And then, then my follow-up question is, is who decides what's excused and what is not excused? Where is that written out?
I would think board officers would make that decision.
So is it subjective, or?
It's not in there.
It's not defined.
Because I was reading through this, and I was thinking, I went through orientation, I never have received anything about you can miss so many times or not miss so many times, or?
Statute has nothing, no definition of excuses or unexcused.
Okay.
That is a.
Board decision.
Board decision. I don't know whether to call it, it's our decision.
Okay. So it's, it's opened for subjective interpretation based on a case-by-case basis?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure. And then.
Or do a reasonable standard?
Right. Is three stipulated?
Of course.
I mean, it stipulates three.
In the policy, you say three consecutive.
Three consecutive. Of unexcused.
So it's just like not showing up?
It does, thousands of times.
What you say, what you say.
It's like a syllabus conversation.
I would document this.
That's right. Okay. All right.
One grade level.
Just like I said.
Then in, I also find it weird that, that a letter has, is presented to the Board at a board meeting, because it seems like a letter would be presented to a board officer any day of the week, that then would be submitted to a formal board meeting. But is that just understood that if you were to resign, you would let your board officer know?
And then the board officer brings a letter forward to the Board.
I mean, should we have that in there?
Maybe that's not as clear, but I would, how you notify the officer, or maybe then the officer would bring it to the Board, not necessarily you have to present it to the Board, and everybody's going, oh, where'd that come from?
Exactly. I mean, wouldn't, so I, so do we need wording that stipulates if someone were to resign, they'll contact the board officer, and then the board officer, I mean?
Brings to the Board at the next board meeting. Hopefully, I'd be fine, or at a board meeting, I don't.
I'm just looking for the language.
I just don't know where the procedure is as opposed to the policy.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that's the question, is we really don't like to put procedures in policy.
Exactly, exactly.
Right. So policy is just, you notify, right?
Right.
And however you notify, you notify. The procedure is separate.
Right.
You don't want to adopt those.
So just asking the question for clarity. Okay. Then it says if there are two, if there are more than two vacancies at any one time, the county commission?
If you have three vacancies, the county commission selects. That's statutory. That's statutory, that's a new law.
That is, that is interesting. I did not, I was not aware of that.
And that has been done.
Several times.
Twice, or three times, well, it's been done, Joplin and Baldur just did it. And Joplin was interesting because there's two counties involved.
Yeah.
Because they split two counties.
Wow.
And Baldur just had it done, and then one of my St. Louis just did it, but they don't have county commissioners, they have city administrators, which really mixed all the stuff up.
Right. And we have both, and so it is, it does fall to the county.
It does fall to the county. If we have three vacancies, the county commission selects replacement for.
All right, yeah, okay. Those are just my observations.
Yeah, that's a simple.
Please don't. Do. I promise.
Okay. Any other questions on, on this policy? We will get clarification from MSBA soon as we can and get that back to you, so you have that answer before the 27th. Moving on, item 6.01, MOSIF, Board of Director, vote to vote on directors for MOSIF, which we are a member. I don't know if that's, Carol, is that you talking about this? But as a member, we have to vote on the Board of Directors' replacements to do that. And we do need to vote tonight, since our board meeting is into the line, to put them in place, so.
From my memories, you know Dr. Sean Smith and Charles Wynn?
Yes, I do.
They are satisfactors for these positions.
Yes, they are. They will be good additions to the board.
And we vote for two, and there's only two.
That's right.
So, okay.
So this allows us to submit the ballot.
Okay, so do you need a motion?
No.
I think Charles Wynnson was part of our orientation from Wayne'sville.
I think he's a candidate.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think he might have.
We'll move that we accept this slate of two candidates for two positions.
Second?
Motion by Jill, second by Charles. We can vote.
Well, maybe a little, maybe.
It's a little slow tonight, isn't it?
Well, I'm having some issues hearing back.
Doctor.
Can't go.
Look.
That is interesting that if he just got training with you, he already is aspiring to this. He's very eager.
Okay, thank you. So let him know if he's then, if he's supportive.
Is it a school program?
Thank you. Okay, moving on, 6.02, 2017, 18, fees and tuition. Ms. Embry, back again.
So this is an annual event for us as we set our fees for the upcoming year. And we have changed this ever so slightly, we've combined some things. So in the past, we had a separate agenda item for the tuition. Tuition has been added as part of the fees for the upcoming year. And a few highlights for you that have been posted is that basically the meal prices are set based on a calculation tool that is provided to us by the federal government and also required by DESI, so USDA, United States.
Department of Agriculture.
Department of Agriculture, thank you.
I was, I'm like, not dairy. Not dairy. We talked about dairy tonight.
I was having a brain pause.
Just stick with your acronyms, I'll stick with you.
So the bottom line in that is that because we do receive funding for reimbursable meals in terms of the free lunch program or reduced rate lunches, we're not able to supplant. So the federal government frowns upon a supplanting using their money to reduce costs for other people. They only want that money to really go for those students. So that's why we have to consistently provide an appropriate level of pricing for our breakfast, lunch, and milk prices. And so that has been done. Also, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education provides us with a calculation tool by which we provide the tuition rate. We are not a district that allows for transfers or enrollees, rather, in general, but we are required each year to set a tuition level appropriate for that grade level. So we've done that. And then the other fees, another one I would highlight for you is the transportation fee, if anyone provides for pay to ride. That is based on a DESI or Department of Elementary and Secondary Education calculation as well. So otherwise, it's standard business. Last minute, we did post that actual, recall last year, we posted the comprehensive facility use document by which we set our fees, and those are the same, but we did post that as a separate document just today that hadn't been uploaded yet. So just want to highlight that for you.
Right, stay in the same, is what you're saying?
Everything's staying the same on that, right. And we have highlighted in red any changes, and this would also come back to you at the second June board meeting for actual approval.
Questions for Ms. Embry?
Do you happen to know just offhand, how are lunch prices compared to surrounding districts?
That's a great question. I'm certain that I can get that information for you, I don't have it in front of me this evening. And it would, it would vary because of the data that goes into the calculation process.
Any other questions?
One I have, it has nothing to do with prices themselves, it's what they are. I think I've asked this before, not, in a while, a long time. How do we come up with some of the fees, like your vote's $16, is that a?
16.
Whatever it is.
I paid a lot more than that this week.
Well.
Is that, how do we come up with that originally to start with? Is that a, do you survey? Do you, is that based on cost? Is it based on?
Typically, they're based on cost.
Okay, that's what I was wanting to know.
And we are doing a thorough evaluation of all of our fees throughout the district, and so for the next year, we may make some other recommendations to you. But, but primarily, it's relative to costs, and, and certainly, when we charge fees, it has to be an optional situation for the students in, in the event that there's a credit that's being received for those fees.
Okay.
For instance, a consumable, I should elaborate on, like, an hard takeaway situation.
Any other questions from Ms. Embry on fees and tuition? Okay, if you have any questions, let her know between now and 27th, and we will vote on that at our next meeting. Moving on, 6.03, Professional Learning Plan. What's it, Kat, that went your, you were kind of first? And I, everybody said, no, this is one of the few documents that the Board has to approve.
Yes.
It's like budget and things like that, so.
So we're voting next?
Next time, yeah, no, it's not now.
Right. Okay. We've got a bunch of documents here.
Well, if you don't mind, we'll just do it from this view, since it's not going to let me present. Let me try one other thing. Okay, we'll do this, just to save time. Good evening. I've prepared just a few slides for you, and I'm here to represent the great work of elected educators in our district who we call the PL Advisory. So teachers from across our district have done important work to give input for the plan, the priorities, the procedures that we follow for professional learning in Springfield Public Schools. And it, their input is priceless, and so I'm here to represent them. The second slide is pictures we've taken through the years. These are some of the current members and past members, and these are just snapshots of times when we've pulled them together to do their work. And several of these pictures show them digging through the data. So one of the things that we do on an annual basis is a needs assessment. We ask every educator in Springfield Public Schools who is willing to fill out a needs assessment survey. And so one thing that I want you all to know is that we take the time to dig through every single response. So the PL Advisory has a day that we use substitutes to bring them together, and they read every response, we analyze it, and that's what we base priorities and offerings in professional learning on. So I want you to know that teachers do that important work, and I just get the honor of facilitating it with my coordinator, Martha Denig, who's here tonight with me as well. I also want to reemphasize to you that it's important to us that you know that we are really intentional about being aligned with your strategic plan. And so there are a few things that you have chosen to focus upon. You have three of them listed on the, the poster that I have listed here. And really, I would argue that we can align our work to all three, but specifically, the first and second are very specific to the work that we do. And I want you to know that the teachers on the Professional Learning Advisory take this very seriously, and they know that what we do for adult learning needs to be engaging, relevant, and personal, so that what students experience every day is engaging, relevant, and personal. So I want you to know that we are paying close attention to that, and that it's very And so there are a few things that you have chosen to focus upon. You have three of them listed on the poster that I have listed here. And really, I would argue that we can align our work to all three, but specifically, the first and second are very specific to the work that we do. And I want you to know that the teachers on the Professional Learning Advisory take this very seriously, and they know that what we do for adult learning needs to be engaging, relevant, and personal, so that what students experience every day is engaging, relevant, and personal. So I want you to know that we are paying close attention to that, and that it's very important to all of us. I also want you to know that the reason I'm in front of you tonight is a compliance measure from the state of Missouri that we are supposed to have you approve the Professional Learning Plan and the Professional Learning Budget yearly. And so that's really why I'm here, just to highlight that work and to let you know that right now, we're preparing and asking you to approve the third year of a multi-year plan. So you may recall seeing this infographic before. Attachment A has the full plan, this is just a visual to kind of put it in a capsule here for you. But bottom line is that when Ignite started in Springfield Public Schools, we made the intentional decision on PL Advisory. It was the year that Ignite was starting and the year that the new educator evaluator system was new. And so wise teachers that they were, realized that coherence was important. And so why not align all of our efforts to those new things? And so instead of having a year-by-year plan that we had always had in the past, we made the decision to make it through 15 through 18. So really, what I'm asking you to approve is the third year of this multi-year plan. We also prepare a budget, and I want you to know that that is an attachment for you. And this is, I'm going to be honest and say it's an estimate, because the funding for this comes from the aid that we get for the district. And there's a rule that says 1% of what the district receives should be spent on professional learning. And when you read the rules about it, it's referred to as 1% money or 2214 fund. And you'll also notice the term PDC as you read compliance things. And I want you to know that PDC at the state level stands for Professional Development Committee, and what we call ours is Professional Learning Advisory. And that is explained in our organizational procedures. There's a reason the teachers wanted to call themselves Professional Learning Advisory instead of Professional Development Council, and they have good rationale for it. So if you're interested in that, you can read our organizational procedures. I want you to know that this budget for the coming year is based on a mirror of what ended up happening this year. So if you want to know what most of the money this year went for, according to the budget that I showed you last June, it ebbs and flows, and I give reports to the PL Advisory throughout the year, and I get their input on priorities. But always, we end up spending the most on our teachers, which I think is a good thing. And what I mean by that is that sometimes they come to things in the summer, and we pay them $75 a day for doing that. It's just a token of appreciation to cover what childcare they might need or something like that. Some teachers come to after-school workshops and Saturday workshops, and so we have small compensation for that. So if you're wondering what that red piece of the pie could be, why would it be so much to teachers? It just adds up that by the time we do that, it's quite a sum of money. The other example I can give you, in fact, I have examples for every piece of the pie here on the next slide. These are examples of what each piece of the pie represents. So if you're wondering, well, what might resources and supplies be? Well, an example I can give you is that we offer cooperative learning three times a year, and the resources for that, like binders, books, resources that teachers use in their classroom with students, that would be a resource and supply example. Ignite kickoff, that will happen in August for the Year Three Ignite. We pay all of the teachers who give up that day because technically it's not a contract date, so $75 a pop or however many come to that is part of the red piece of the pie. So I just want you to know that we have estimates and that the actual implementation of this third year of the plan takes collaboration from lots of departments. So blended learning curriculum, our department, the teachers, there's a lot of collaboration that has to take place to cover all the bases for all of the needs in the district. And hopefully, you can see from these examples that that's what's happening. So I want you to know that it's one of the greatest honors that I have in the job that I have to represent the good work of the PL Advisory teachers. They truly care about being champions for professional learning. And I also wanted to share with you that I'm recently reading something by Fulan and Quinn, was published in 2017, and it's a book called Coherence. And I want you to know that one of the things I'm proud of is that we have what he considers in his coherence framework, a focusing direction, that we're being intentional about what we do, having a focus. We have cultivating collaborative cultures, which we do through SPLS, we do through the PL Advisory, we're talking to them a lot about their efficacy and how they can be champions for professional learning among their colleagues. And then deepening learning is another one of his coherence frameworks. And our work with Pedagogy and with Andragogy is really important to make that happen in the system. So in one of the most recent readings that I've done, it made me feel proud of the wisdom of Springfield Public School educators. That's all I have for you.
Questions for Dan?
Well, just one thing I'd like to mention, when we looked at you, when you attached for us your district Professional Learning Advisory team, you have a majority of teachers, I mean, on that team is, like, you have one, two, three, four, five, six teachers, six secondary teachers. So to me, that's a good thing.
Yes.
That you're not making these decisions with that, a tremendous amount of input by teachers in the classroom.
Yes. When we're all present, there are 17 of us, and that Martha and I are just facilitators, and we don't vote on anything. And then we have representatives from both teacher organizations that are part of our advisory, but everybody else is an elected member, and organizational procedures specify how they give input and what their work is. So if you're interested in that, that's there for you.
Any other questions?
Any questions? Just a comment, though I will happily vote on, for example, the bread suggestion that comes to us next time. The school does not work on bread alone. The real work that happens, happens in the classroom with educators, et cetera. So this I will vote for with enthusiasm.
Thank you.
The only comment I have, the state requires 1% of what you do, but I know we spend more than 1% of our budget on professional learning, which is, in fact, I'm glad we do, because I know that our son's a doctor.
Right.
The 1% they give, that's all they spend. And I think we've taken that to the next level, because that's important to our teachers, our staff, that learning is part of why we're here.
Right.
I think it's important to the public to know, we don't do just the minimum on professional learning, that that's a strategic goal for us.
Yes.
Our staff departments are local dollars, right? I mean, our staff coaches are blended learning specialists, those pieces are local dollars that we commit to supporting the classroom, so.
Exactly, because the rule is that salaries can't be part of that 1%. So that's a really good example of how we go above that requirement, yes, and we appreciate it. We love the work that we do, and we're honored to get to do it.
And thank you for what you do.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, item 6.04 Summer School Transportation Routes. Ms. Embry, we just will put a chair up here.
Count my steps. Okay. So I do need to highlight for you that very rarely do we bring something to you and ask you to approve it in the same board meeting, but this is one of those rare instances, and it's because we provide you just-in-time delivery of these routes as they are pulled together to provide for extended learning for these students with disabilities. So remember that we do not receive reimbursement for our regular transportation routes that are supporting Explore, but we do receive state funding through the transportation formula for these routes, and that's why we need an approval from you. If you compare this data to last year's, you'll see that the total number of routes has remained the same. And the grand total, we're slightly up on special education routes, 125 this year compared to 117 last year. Early childhood special education routes have reduced this year, 18 versus 27 last year. And then there are four routes that are ineligible, blended routes, that would be a combination of early childhood special ed and regular special ed, 26 routes this year as compared to six last year. So 11 pages of routes are listed for you on board docs. I would like you to approve this as presented, please.
So moved. It's time, I'm in. Second. Oh, sorry.
Well, you've got it on the table.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a motion for Jill, two seconds, wait a minute. Okay, now I'll ask a question. Ridership for Dan from last year? Yeah?
I don't know. I'll find out.
I was just curious, we have more kids riding or...
Right. I want to say it's fairly stable.
Same number of routes, it probably is, I was just curious if more kids were on.
Right. I'll find out. Great question.
Any other questions?
I appreciate the work of the Transportation Department.
Yes, indeed.
Keeps this in mind. This is a, yeah, it's a complex...
Complex system.
Yes.
They're doing great.
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
It might have been premature, I'm not sure.
Keeping it going. It's time, I'm in.
Okay, motion passed. Thank you for that. Moving on, 6.05 Major Instruction Goals for Several Areas. Allison.
Thank you for having us tonight. Annie is loading our presentation. We do this annually whenever we are on our adoption cycle. The first step in our cycle is to present to you our major instructional goals, and we're going to kind of go through our process a little bit tonight. But I want to first introduce the people who worked on this. Constance Leonard is here, she is new to the position this year, but she oversees our CTE programs. So that includes business ed and marketing, it includes fax, it includes tech ed, Project Lead the Way, all of those programs. And then Teresa Miller is here, and she oversees the curriculum development for PE, driver's education, and K-12 health. And then we have Ann Wallenmeyer, who oversees science as well as assessment and interventions. So in the cycle, like I said, the first phase is to review our standards and make sure that they align with our local needs as well as the state and national standards that are provided for us. After we exit this phase, then we go into the curriculum development phase, and that is the presentation that we do usually late winter, early spring for you all, where we excitedly share all of the things that we've been working on all year. So we will soon begin that phase with these standards in the fall. And then after that, we go into our curriculum review and maintenance and make sure that our curriculum that we have written still matches. Was it the best activity? Was it the best way to teach it? Or is there a menu of activities that we could pull from that? So we are still being impacted by House Bill 1490 that went into effect last year. And this is actually our last set of standards that we have rewritten as a result of that House Bill. So that impacted the core content areas, math, science, English, and social studies. And so 612 science is the last one that we are rewriting. And those standards will be assessed, and the reason that we're a little later on those is those standards will not be assessed until the 2018, 2019 school year. Whenever we create our major instructional goals, we, like I said, we rely heavily on the state and national standards, mostly especially in those areas that are assessed by EOCs or by grade level assessments. We want to make sure obviously that we're meeting the standards that they're going to assess our students over. But especially with business marketing, that was written this year, health, those kind of content areas that maybe aren't assessed, we want to make sure that we're pulling our local industries and our local needs into those conversations, focusing on skills that they need to get to college. So we partnered with multiple university professors to make sure that what we are teaching in our high school is going to align with what they need to be prepared for their college classes. And these are really driven by the teachers. We are there to facilitate and make sure, you know, get their questions answered if they have them, connect them with community partners or college professors. But our teachers are the ones at the tables writing these, and because they're the ones who are working with our students, they know what their students want to do, are ready to do, things like that. And then we seek input from administrators and parents in that process as well. So I won't go over all of them, but you have access to click on each of these different links right here, and that'll take you to another page with a lot of links, and that'll give you every course that we have in SPS and the standards that align with those courses. And then, like I said, after we exit this phase, then we start with writing for the creation of the curriculum, pulling our teachers in, figuring out, you know, aligning them in project-based learning units, what are the outcomes that we want to have, and then selecting resources that align with the learning that we want to see in our classrooms. And that is my presentation. Do you all have any questions?
Of course. Yeah, maybe more comments. So, and this may be more to Annie, anyone, in terms of some of the science curriculum standards. So have you seen much or a significant change in science content based upon national science, NSTA, on those standards? I mean, has there been any tremendous change in...
There has been a huge reduction in the number of standards. The standards are higher order than usual standards, and there's less of the fact retention. They lend themselves very much to problem-based learning units and application of the content. So of course, students' laws are still students' laws, but rather than stating those laws, students are asked to apply them and find examples of that in their world.
Well, I just know there's so much talk about, oh, you know, having national standards. We've had national standards for always, especially in the content areas for the middle school and high school. So, but that doesn't mean that we have to write our major instructional goals, you know, just as, that's minimum standards. These are what we specifically want our students to know and do.
And our support system, we go way above and beyond what the national standards are in our advanced courses.
And something I really liked that I read on some of the curriculum, the mix, the guides, is that you, there's a lot, I see a lot of terms, a lot of construct, create, develop, use a model, plan and conduct, so it's a lot of hands-on, well, what do we call it now? Project-based learning?
And so these standards are three-dimensional, and so they have a process, engineering, and science practices, and content woven together, where before, our standards were just content.
Excellent. And then one little comment I have on the, to Teresa, health and PE. This weekend, we're going to talk about, this last weekend, we're going to talk about it more a little bit later in our board comments, but we attended, several of us attended a leadership summit, MSBA Leadership Summit, and one of our keynote speaker mentioned how very critical it is as a board that we push and/or we require a very rigorous health and physical education curriculum in our district to keep our kids healthy. So it was very exciting to read all the awesome things that we are going to expect our kids to know and be able to do in health and PE. And I was, I mentioned to you earlier, but I was so happy to see we're still doing the hooky pokey in first grade. I mean, it doesn't get better than that.
That is what it's all about.
That is what it's all about.
And it's really, it's really great to see how, how it progresses through each grade level with the expectations of them moving around, getting out, moving around. Yeah, it's great. Anyway, very impressive, very impressive work on your mix.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions, Frau Allison?
All right, I can't help it that I'm going to make a comment. So, you know, you hear these days that sometimes kids take things online or take it in the summer to avoid because there's this theory that they don't like it. I just want to, my kids love being, they just come back and they talk about what they did, and they enjoy it. So to her point that it's important, it's also making a difference to people. They're enjoying it.
She's speaking really good right now.
Well, it didn't occur to me I was going to say that, but when she was talking, I thought you'd want to know. I enjoy it.
Thank you for providing all this, so that we can geek out. Yeah, geek out and look at all that, so appreciate it.
Questions? We have a few weeks to look at it before approval at last meeting again.
All right. Let us know.
Thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the budget. One more time, Ms. Embry.
One more time.
Ms. Embry, you're longer.
This is going to take you a little while.
Hold on, somebody...
They love science, too.
Well, I don't.
They constantly love to...
She's a lawyer.
Mike's empathy. Okay, now we're back to you.
Here we go.
Bring it all together.
All right. Okay. Well, this is a big event this evening.
It is a big event.
Because we are going to talk about the 2017-2018 budget, the recommendation that will culminate at the June 27 meeting, but we will ask for your approval. So this is for your first read consideration. As we start with our strategic plan, because everything that we've done behind the scenes, all the conversations that have taken place are aligning us to our strategic plan always. So this evening, our discussion objectives, I always like to start with that, would be to talk very briefly about the development process, like to re-center on our current year revenue adjustments that we've been notified on in the last few weeks, then provide you with the projections for both revenue and expenditures and those primary changes for next year as compared to current year. We'll comment about the operating fund balance projection, and then we do need to talk about those other funds, that include the bond and the debt, GO-CAPS, and the Health Benefit Trust Fund. The general budget summary and primary changes, which will be a document that we will post as well. And then just a little look at estimated current year versus next year, so you can see the similarities and differences there. Okay. So the process. We've had this conversation multiple times, so January through May, while budget development meetings were occurring with our leaders behind the scenes, March through May, we have engaged in conversations in this very room to talk about how the budget is constructed and our current year experience. Tonight is the recommendation with primary changes, June 27 will be that approval moment, and the final budget document will be presented for you as well, leading up to that meeting. And then we'll continue the journey again, the cycle continues, where we'll bring you monthly budget alignment recommendations through the treasurer's reports each month. So I'm going to breeze through that. I talked about it, now I'm making you dizzy.
Wow.
So I forgot I was in a prezi again, you know, I've been doing the PowerPoint option. So operating funds, and this is what pays for people and things, right? And our major changes in the current year, and this... And our major changes in the current year, and this is based on information that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education provided us just in May, that we can expect to see Proposition C sales tax go up, so we're anticipating an increase of $670,000, changing the distribution rate, which is based on prior year weighted average daily attendance, from 960 to 979. And then for the foundation formula and classroom trust fund, we're seeing an influx of $860,000 is anticipated as we land this fiscal year. And that's because they have increased the state adequacy target from 6,110 recommendation at the beginning of the year to 6,180 per weighted average daily attending. And as a reminder, on that basic formula calculation, it's simply taking weighted average daily attendance times the state adequacy target, times the dollar value modifier equals, minus local effort equals our formula contribution from the state. There may be more math than you want to encounter in this moment. I also have a note that every year we have funds that are not spent out of existing budgets in the current year. And at this point in time, we're estimating approximately $2 million or 0.88 of 1% of the operating budget may likely be returned to the fund balance.
Carol, can I mention something?
Yes, sure.
Just, I want to make a point. That is not a bad thing.
That is not a bad thing.
It doesn't mean anyone miscalculated, they used their funds. It's at the end of the year, you may not have, I guess I'm speaking from past experience, you may not have had to purchase the items that you thought you did. I think it's responsible for district staff to say, I have this money, I could spend this money, but I really don't need this money, so I'm going to let it go back for use of other things.
I appreciate your observation.
We've got a better deal.
Yeah. We've got a better, better deal.
Okay. So as we move into fiscal year 18, this provides you with the primary changes. We'll start first and take a look at local revenue. So I know this slide has a lot going on, but primarily what you need to know is that we are estimating an additional $2,522 plus new construction, estimated at $1,555,000. And this is based on those assumptions that are listed. Consumer Price Index is what caps us basically. So the good news is, is that it's 2.1%. Last year it was 1.7, and the year before that it was 0.7, which was not very stealth. This is also based on an operating tax levy of 3.5603, which is a slight reduction from our current levy, and a collection rate of 97.53%, which is actually quite good in our community. So as a reminder, we will receive the final assessed valuation information from Greene County Clerk's office, and that will get a report in July, and then we get the final report in August. And that's typically just in time for us to then make recommendation to you for setting the tax levy. We'll use state auditor forms to calculate it. This is all an estimate at this time. We've talked before about the interesting cycle by which we need to approve a budget, but then learn some primary revenue information after we start the new year. So the information there at the bottom, and I'm realizing that my slide is not displaying on this very well. How about that?
We should go back to the PowerPoint.
Go back to the PowerPoint. This is much more fun. So as a reminder, the assessed valuation data is calculated by taking different buckets of categories, one being personal property. And the assessed value rate applied to the market value for personal property is 33 1/3%. Commercial real estate is 32% of market value. Residential real estate is 19% of market value. And then agricultural real estate is 12% of market value. And you'll remember when we had a lot of information provided during one of the board meetings leading up to facility master planning and the bond issue discussion. So that's just that reminder for you there. But regardless of the increase that the county clerk or the assessor's office is communicating to us, which right now is allegedly between 4% to 6%, we're capped at the Consumer Price Index. So overall, we are looking at a 2.1% increase.
So this may be the first time that we're actually going to have more accuracy because of the cap.
Yeah.
We kind of know that's what it's going to be.
Right. The unknown piece is, yeah, and we don't know new construction, so it's.
All right, it's still.
And it affects, it ultimately affects the operating levy. So if assessed valuation goes higher, then the operating levy is reduced so that we don't make more revenue than a 2.1% increase.
Okay.
Okay. The next major revenue change as we move into FY18 is Proposition C sales tax. This is a sales tax that originated in 1982, a one-cent sales tax for schools and highway funds. And it is distributed, while it's a local tax and it shows up on our financial reports as local, it comes to us through the state of Missouri because it's distributed based on the prior year weighted average daily attendance data. And right now, DESI indicates that we should anticipate $985 per weighted average daily attendance, and that's up from what our final Prop C rate is in the current year from 979. So that's another $1,020,000 right there. So state revenue changes, primary changes going into FY18, we did enjoy that the legislative body did move forward with full funding of our foundation formula, which is great news for public education throughout our state. And our estimated increase based on our current data is $1.842 million. That assumes a state adequacy target of 6,220 and a dollar value modifier of 1.029. And the dollar value modifier is that factor that is applied in the simple math that accounts for the cost of living in a particular area. So you're at one or greater, dependent on the data for your area. We have factored into this as well a slight increase in the weighted average daily attendance of almost 42 students. Okay, expenditures, primary changes. And as we start this process, I'm going to invite my friends to join me at the podium. So Ms. Turner, if you would please come forward, and I will continue to drive for you. We'll talk about staff compensation and benefits first.
Right. So this chart should be something that you have seen before, and we typically come to you with this information in the late summer after the new salary schedules are published for all of our peer districts. So I just want to start off by pointing you to the bachelor's level, and this is the teacher's competitive comparison for salaries. So the darker green means that we are the most competitive. So I just want to start off with the top level for the bachelors. And just to give you some context, so the first-ranked school on the bachelors for step one and step two was Ozark, but slightly. So $600 a year for Ozark, and then second was Republic, and they were about $300 a year more than SPS. So we ranked third. So you'll see, it's starting to get a little greener as we get down. So when you get actually to step, excuse me, step five is when we actually pay more than Ozark. You get down to step 10, and then we start paying more than Republic.
What is it for Ozark at six or five?
At five. So Ozark is actually 39,250. We are 39,251.
Be my daughter.
Someone's to ask a question, you're like, oh. As a lawyer, you're not supposed to do that. That went poorly to the home team.
But it matters.
Man, I'm not impressed with that.
Are we higher? Yes, we are.
We are higher.
Yeah, but we can do better.
So step 11 is, steps 11 through 16, we rank the number one. So you'll see, that's where we start to get a little bit darker.
No questions.
Okay? And then when we hit step 17, it changes to Branson being number one. Okay? So that gives you a little context on where we stand competitively on our salaries, and this is again, just the teachers. You'll see that updated slide toward the end of the summer, whenever we can calculate.
And if you want to get an idea of the percentage of our employees in each section, so bachelors, you see 32%, then masters, that's where the majority, I think it's 58, 58 there. So it also helps you get an idea of where you want to be, the most green, right? Because that's where the biggest segments of your population are.
And we encourage ongoing learning.
Exactly. We want, you really don't want to be deep green, step 30 in bachelors. You want people to be moving onward towards.
Makes sense. Okay. Maybe not. So the next, the next piece of information for you is our salary schedule recommendations for 2017, 18. Our estimated schedule for a staff is 3.4 million. Our estimated cost of living will be 3.1 million, and then our budget increase recommendation overall is 6.5 million. You will get detailed information on the collective bargaining agreements. We have landed all five of those, so we will have, bring that forward for approval at the next board meeting. Next is our benefits for all of our eligible staff. So just to give you an idea, overall, our benefits plan is very competitive among our local peers. And you might be wondering, well, what, who are our peers? Ozark, NYCA, Rogersville, Stratford, Republic, and Willard are the people that we surveyed. So when you're looking, when you're, I'm actually telling you how we stand, it's against those peers. So we are the lowest-cost medical plan premiums. We are the lowest out-of-pocket maximums for employees out of that group of peers. We offer very competitive dental and vision plans, and then we also offer that flexible spending accounts for medical and childcare. So those are really the highlights of where we stand on our benefits. Now, we will be doing another survey toward the end of this year. It is slated for the fall of this year. So we will, it's time. You'll see that on one of my next slides. So the last, yes?
It said no cost for health benefits. That doesn't include dental and vision, is it?
No, that does not. No, we are competitive with dental and vision, but that's the health.
I want to make sure that that was not, when I look at health, I want to make sure that was only.
It's only the medical. That's correct. Okay?
When you use the term competitive, you mean that is a consistent standard in the industry?
You know, if you know very much about dental and vision, there's not a lot of discrepancy on what's offered in Springfield. So we are, we are getting a competitive rate for Springfield. Okay? So our compensation and benefits study, the last study that was done here at SPS Comprehensive Study was in May of 2012. We are slated to do another one later this year. We're working on our job descriptions now so that we can get those in good shape, so that we can actually go out and have good matches for those, for those positions. So we are estimating about $200,000 for that comprehensive survey. The benefits side is really where you get a lot of that cost, because it takes a little bit more time to do all that analysis.
How often do we typically review this?
We haven't done it, and it's five years. And if you ask my opinion, between three and five years is a really good benchmark.
Okay.
We're, it's time for us to do that.
Will we do that ourselves or bring someone?
I believe that we will bring in a consultant. And that's what we did last time. We used Education Management Solutions. So yeah, I believe we'll go up for an RFP, and we will actually get a consultant to And then last, employee wellness enhancement. So we are enhancing our wellness program. I'm excited to announce that. So enhancing the district's wellness program, we're going to try to promote our healthier physical and financial lifestyles. So we're going to put on seminars and webinars and things like that that our employees can actually take advantage of for financial, to also help with their financial health, health, excuse me. Reducing medical claims and employee absenteeism is usually a driver of why we would want to offer a wellness program. So there, some have differences of opinion, but again, I think it's better to be proactive in that regard than to be reactive on claims and health. Provide an incentive for health risk assessments. The benefits team is actually in the process of designing what that's going to look like. We're working with our broker, JW Terrell, on that process, and we're working with our other partners, Mercy and some of the other partners that we have, to build that plan. And then funding building level department stipends for wellness champions. So we're estimating the, an impact for all of this of about $250,000 for, and it'll come out of our Health Benefit Trust Fund. And the stipends that we want to offer those wellness champions, just to kind of give you a little bit of a flavor for that, we're, we are projecting about $25,000. We have 56 buildings, and we are wanting to at least offer $250 a year to be a wellness champion. Some of those buildings are large, so we would have to have a couple potentially. So, and then also the HRA incentives, we are estimating about $150,000. But again, that design is still in process. And then, yes.
Lisa, that wellness champion could be anyone on staff.
Anyone.
Not necessarily has to be the nurse in the building, but can be a teacher.
Absolutely. There's lots of healthy folks that are passionate about wellness, and that's what we want to take advantage of. Activity and program expansions, about $75,000. Those are some of our programs, like Move Your Shoes, where we have a walking program. We are doing some additional incentives. We are actually starting a telephonic wellness coach. So again, we're working with Mercy and JW Terrell to build some of those programs. Fitness center reimbursements, we would still continue to offer. We are actually going to have a telemedicine program that's going to start with our new year. And then, of course, we want to promote our current employee assistance program a little bit more, and then our nurse on call, which we've had for a while, but we want to do better double promoting those things. So those are just a few things on the list.
What is, what is the fitness center reimbursement?
So you can join a fitness center, and you can actually get a percentage back based on the cost. And yeah, so you can get more if you go more. It's a, you can get a sliding scale.
Okay. Good.
Ask a question, this is left field, okay?
Left field, okay.
Because you did this and brought a doctor on staff.
Yes.
At C.
Yes, we did.
Is that, did it work?
I think it worked in a lot of cases. They actually have a physician's.
We're bigger than they are, as far as employees.
Physicians assistant is, I think, who they're using now. But OTC also has an onsite talk. It's definitely worth looking into. It's not cheap, but yet it could benefit because it's onsite. People miss less work. You have 20-minute appointments. You can schedule those. I mean, there's a lot of benefits to it. They can actually do your analysis on your HRAs. It's private. It's kept separate from the health plan. So there are lots of advantages. I'm a big fan. I'm also a big fan of the telemedicine. I've used it. It's, it's amazing.
And the nurse on call, can you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, that's actually an 800 number. Like if you had an emergency for a child, maybe an overdose of some kind of medication or something happened, you can do the nurse on call. They will direct you, and it's a free call. So it can save money for going to an emergency room or some of those types of things. Yeah, it's.
Is that for personal, I mean, that's, okay, okay. Is the nurse on call like somebody in Arizona or like somebody local?
No, it's through Mercy. It's through local. It's through Mercy.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Have to be an avoid.
Can you use it if you're on the board? As we were talking about, we're like, can you?
Okay. So next, I'm inviting Dr. Mike Dawson to join me as we talk about our projected enrollment, class size impacts, and other supports. Do want to highlight for you that any estimate with regard to teacher salaries, we are using a master step 11 as our estimate, and then for other types of positions, a step 3 on the respective salary schedules for any full-time equivalency. So, I'll drive. Are you okay with that?
One of the first things we'd have to do is look at projections of enrollment and class size. This process actually changed about a year ago when we changed our transitional transfer process in our choice schools. So all of that wraps up in December now in one umbrella. Then when we turned the calendar in January, Amy St. John and her team go to work and start doing the projections. And when you can see, we're relatively flat with the overall 73 student increase, most of those happening at the secondary. We have a larger fifth to sixth and a larger eighth to ninth going up. So you have students moving into the secondary run. What we say is the FTE follows the students. So we have no new staff coming in for classrooms because we can ship within grade level, and we're also maintaining that same classroom size. What we've prepared for you tonight is just a kind of a look at what it looks like on that bands of K-1 classroom size on an average from title and non-title. You'll see consistently that we're providing more level of support at those titled schools using federal funds to bring class size down to make it more any more personal.
Special education.
Thank you. As you know, we've had many conversations with leaders and evaluated programs, evaluated their requests for budget processing. Special education is, has requested additional teacher, a couple of paraprofessionals. That's really based on caseload management, and that becomes an automatic moment when we have to follow the individual. And that becomes an automatic moment when we have to follow the individual education plan, i.e., that was for you.
Oh, come on, Mike. I know that one. Seriously.
I gotta help you out. The other two are kind of unique, and that's two additional sign language interpreters. Those kids, we have feeder from Holland to Jarrett to Parkview. And as they kind of move through the system, we have to provide those levels of supports. And the last one is an educational diagnostician. We have used-
Say that a couple more times. Just once. He did it. He nailed it. Don't back up. Don't back up.
We have used interns to help us do some of this extra testing when it comes up for IQ and achievement regarding an IEP reevaluation. We have used retired teachers for that and we have contracted services for that. We believe that a more efficient model is to bring our own person on staff to help us coordinate and even become more efficient. Now, that practice has been done in the past and it went away and we believe it's the time to bring it right back, so.
Mike, how many, with the two additional sign language interpreters, how many would that give us total?
That's a great question, because we have, we have some specialized folks at our individuals. So, we have some at Holland.
She's friend.
14. They'll give us 14.
14.
14, about 14. So, and yes, we've listed in each instance the particular position and the estimate used for the annual gross pay.
Early childhood, maintaining our commitment, which is directly tied to our strategic plan to add two additional parents as teachers, educators. This is really the note of if we are supported through the state funding form of full funding, distribution of the funding in 17, 18, it does trigger some additional supports for early childhood in the 18, 19 year. We fully, we feel that these two additional educators can help us finding where all these kids are at because we're going to be able to bring them into the system in a year from now. It also correlates perfectly with their screening goal of 10,000 screens a year by 2020. And we're going to need more people in the field to make that happen, so. Good work. The last one here is the UNEIGHT III. This is your ongoing commitment for our integration plan of modern tools. We are one-to-one in many environments. This will conclude that commitment with an additional 9,500 Chromebooks and 1,000 iPads. We will be one-to-one in those environments from third through 12th grade. And I believe distribution at this point is looking someplace around before Labor Day for the whole system. Now, if you recall, UNEIGHT I, we went all the way to January finishing with Hillcrest. And I believe everybody's like, capacity has been built and we're ready and we want them right away. So, I know Bruce and-
It's like back the truck up and-
Bruce and Dr. Lemon, they're all working with principals to make all of that deployment happen. And it's no small feat to make that go. You'll recall last year, we added some blended learning specialists to really be coaches with teachers as we did this deployment and this integrated initiative. This year, it's really about infrastructure. So, we've gone to a help desk specialist and we've gone to a secretary to help support these devices that are in just every building and every classroom in our system.
So, the positions listed there are hourly positions. They're non-exempt employees, so that's based on 2,080 hours per year for the annual gross calculation.
Professional learning, or extended learning program expansion, what do they call it? ELP. Yeah, ELP.
Oh, see, that fails the test.
This is the work I'm probably most excited about right now. The school district offers after-school tutoring. We do it for students who are qualified because they have meta-criteria, a metric, maybe they're below basic in reading or a grade or two behind. And then we are able to invite them in for some extended learning. Currently, we do a 30, a minimum of 30 hours for that program. We have been charged by our superintendent and Dr. Hackenworth has pulled together a kind of a think-tank team to say, what can we do differently? We are looking at a complete expansion of this program to really offer that child not 30 hours of extended learning, but up to 120 hours. This is an investment in a coordinator who would help us. So, we've learned a little bit from Explore. When you're going to blow something out on a big scale, you add the supports. This is kind of getting ahead of that. This will, this, these are hours that are collected for ADA that come as funding source into the district. This will be all budget neutral before it's all over, so.
But important to note, this is an investment on the front end, as you mentioned, to get ahead of it. So, the revenue would be after the fact. It would follow.
Mike, we're still looking at those children that are one or two grades below. I know there was, there's a state requirement for those that are below reading.
Yep.
But I think our extended learning program does include both reading and math.
It does.
So, this is additional tutoring for students that are behind in math.
I'm glad you said that. It does incorporate math and ELA. It's grades 2 through 5 right now. That's our first piece, first phase of it. We're going to do more integrated, hands-on curriculum that has targeted standards. So, what we did with through Amy St. John's office, it says, hey, here are the 10 most efficient standards that we have. And so, they started creating curriculum around those 10 that's engaging relevant personnel. We're going to be some team teaching around it. So, we think this is going to be a really great model moving forward. But phase two could be middle school students and high school students. It would be eligible for this kind of additional supports to.
Mike, this focus on identifying students who may need some additional support brings to mind, you know, we've added some sort of infrastructural support for UNEIGHT. After next year, we'll be fully ignited. Are we, are we built up sufficiently in analytics and assessment that we'll be able sort of to track the educational impact of UNEIGHT?
You see that? Few more slides.
Few more slides.
There you go. So, yeah, the answer is yes. We're going to meet some help.
So, this next item, we'll call-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go back, you'll go back and finish up about, talking about your ELP coordinator. I don't think you got to mention that on the first slide.
Well, it's actually, we believe this is the front end of the work right now.
Yes.
We're going to, but the revenue will pay for itself in the long term.
Yeah, but that is a critical position.
Absolutely.
If you're going to try to expand this program.
Annie Wallmeyer does science education. Who's gone? Science education, but she also does our TSC process and our extended learning program. So, be able to remove that and let her focus on her passion of science, especially as we go into an adoption year, is just the perfect moment.
We have often, in the past, we stick extended learning program onto someone that may have four or five other positions. And so, you cannot provide the intensive time and effort that this, we really need to give this. So, I'm happy to see that someone is going to be-
This is all going to connect to that multi-tiered system that my friend Phyllis and Jay constantly talk about, would be learning supports, behavior supports. This person will also connect in with Explore because that's part of the extended learning. So, we're excited about this position and what it can do for having an impact on the school system.
Before you move forward, I'd like to go back just a little bit. So, when you talked about classroom sizes, can you just share with us how those numbers, title versus non-title and broken up like that, that's not, there's no consideration for any kind of paraprofessional support in those classrooms? That's just teacher, one teacher?
That's exactly it, just a teacher.
So, then how, I mean, how do you all determine who gets a paraprofessional, who doesn't? I mean, when are those decisions looked at and how do we adjust throughout the?
Going to front, Dr. Anderson is actually in charge of that process and has a number of kind of criteria that he uses when he's putting a sign for professionals.
I'm sure you do.
There is a, there is a state criteria that if a class is above a certain size or we say, once they reach a minimum standard plus an additional amount of students, then you need some extra support placed in there. But beyond that, we also look at the ages of the students and we look at the students themselves that are filling the classroom because sometimes they need that additional support.
Right.
Usually, split classrooms, we have found sometimes, the younger the grades, especially the K-1, might need that more additional support, K-1, 1, 2. Sometimes it's based upon the academic needs. And so, there's a, there's about three or four factors that I consider, besides the state criteria.
Okay. Because I know sometimes when there's high-needs students, you pair that up. But I just didn't know if there was a formula. But it sounds like there's several different factors.
There's processes in place. We try to avoid one on para-support unless there is a, an IEP need or a FIBO4 need for that. But that's when I work with my counterpart to decide that. But as far as general instructional support or building management, we have some criteria that we use. I'd be happy to share that with you.
Okay. Thank you.
And some of our federal dollars help out with that, right? Is that what you mentioned earlier, with some federal support on paras or?
Yes, we'd have, we'd have some supports using federal funds, in title.
In title schools.
Yeah, the title schools.
Okay, we'll move on. So, this one, recall that you approved the idea behind the middle school extracurricular activities and MISH expansion, April 25. Is there anything else to add to that, Dr. Dawson?
No, they might. The thing, this is already in motion thanks to your approval. Seasons, schedules are all happening behind the scenes. Coaches are being hired up, so thank you very much. And I'm excited about not only the athletic side of it because it aligns us to the region and it's way past due, but those engagement stipends to getting more kids involved. And I had the privilege of introducing Daniel Gutierrez, our choir teacher of the year, teacher of the year, teacher's choir lead. And to see that he could say, could I have an after-school choir? And I was like, yes, you could. You know, like, he doesn't have enough. So, he just said, I want to do more. So, to have that kind of an impact mechanism within this expansion is really important, too.
That might be, Mike, more.
Might be.
This is, that's so exciting. Like, it's going to be so fun to see in the next few years, everything that's going on in middle schools. So exciting.
This is a secondary academy consultant engagement and you're going to learn a little bit about this and later on in your agenda today from Dr. Dublin and his team. But this is really kind of that Imagine SPS Secondary and this continuing that story. So, I'm just going to paint it for a moment, but if you remember, Dr. Hackenworth's team kind of came up with that engagement process where counselors and teachers and principals all became a student for a couple of days. That was about a year or so ago. And the outcome of that were some really specific goals. This is kind of an update into that work, so you'll learn more about that in just a little bit in the agenda. This is curriculum, program stipends. And this is actually work that's probably, this is grassroots work, I say, because this work is probably already being done in the system and now we're matching resources to grow it even larger. So, I would tell you, Middle School Scholar Bowl. It was a fantastic teacher who said, hey, I want to try this. They ended up getting fantastic teachers at other middle schools who said, yeah, we'll do it, too. Then they started hosting conferences, you know, and competitions. And now, we're going to be able to put some resource behind these. We have multiple elementary math and STEM type of clubs going on. I was thinking about the one Jay was sharing me, sharing with me at Westport. Early morning science club that a teacher does. And now, we're going to be able to provide some supports and expand that model throughout the system. So, this is a great use of funds. This is also really important work as you participated this year in some of our district-level diversity training. We believe that this is the right structure of creating more awareness and supports for students that are underrepresented in our system. We just saw that model play out with wellness. We have a wellness, district wellness person, and now we're going to put champions in every one. We have a blended learning specialist and we have blended learning mentors in every building to help push that work and provide that support. These equity and access champions will then help provide that level of support for not only students of underrepresented, but could be English language learners. It could be homeless students. So, that we move from this singleton model of one person trying to serve 50 buildings to kind of an organized team that we can do some real targeted professional development for, but also link with our community and our resources within our community to help train our staff. So, this is really excellent work and I know Mrs. Moore is really excited about this, too. The behavior supports, this is kind of been a pivot. So, last year, the team came together and said, hey, we wanted a model classroom to help figure out how we can do some behavior supports in a more systematic way. Through a great leadership series with Phyllis and Jay, they've kind of come back and said, we needed a more systematic approach than one model classroom in one school with eight or 10 kids. Kind of the day treatment program at Burl is kind of what we were thinking at that time. But through the training, through the research, they've really said, hey, this is what we need. We need to go back and reorder people. So, we were talking about paraprofessionals. We have behavior tests. We have behavior interventionists and we have school psychologists. But now, they're, they'll have a leader that can actually train teachers, staffs, teams, and behavior supports for kids in intervention. This is probably one of the things I hear about the most in the system is how, what can we do to help these kids to stay in our classrooms? We just need more supports. This is a smarter way to work as we're going to bring case management to some behavior issues now. It's a good work. The other piece there is a community liaison. We have approved, we're asking for approval for one community liaison at a title school. It's just another layer of support, kind of as a proof of concept moment to, in a high-poverty, high-need community, to really not be so much reactive to discipline, but proactive engaging the community with maybe our Good Dads Program or the Reading Program or whatever it is, getting more involvement. So, good work there, too.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dr. Dawson.
Thank you.
We have a few more items for your consideration. The other operating budget changes would include district-level administration. That would be the addition of a chief communications officer. This is not a new conversation, but something that has been part of the original reorganization that occurred back 2015.
Yeah, those of you that were on the board at that point remember the reorg structure as one of the recommendations that came out of Listening and Learning. And at that time, I had placed a chief communications officer on the board chart, but it just left that unfilled for the last two years. Lots of things in the educational world continue to change, including avenues for communication. More and more are coming open, as well as expectations from stakeholders, from parents to kids to internal staff and our community, as well as we know some significantly shifting political landscapes at federal and state level, with school choice knocking on our doors or trying to beat it down in lots of different ways. So, I think while we've left that unfilled for, unfilled for the last two years, I think it is time to make that investment. And the chief communications officer will be highly built around the strategies necessary to communicate with all of our audiences, deal with the avenues that are changing in communications, and also significantly deal with those landscapes that are, that are changing at the federal and state level. So, that's one of the district-level recommendations.
This slide reminds us of the launch program that you approved May 23 during that board meeting, where we would invest in developing out the online academy collaborative. And recall that we provided with you the estimated expenditures and revenues and that in the beginning, there would be a projected reserve impact of 217,507 or .08 of 1%. And that in later years, that would be recouped and it would be self-sustaining. Additional operational supports recommended are two positions. And Dr. Taylor, to your point, one is the data analyst position that would support the performance analytics department, as you asked earlier, so.
Or learning assessment?
It would be, it would be part of that support structure. Right. And then the other position is an ASH from the transportation department. Title's referenced as lead driver, but it's really an office position. That's the industry standard with regard to the name. The person who would be supporting in the office with regard to reviewing videos and evaluation documentation, that type of thing, would also have the ability to drive when needed. So, referred to as a lead driver supporting transportation. Additionally, we have some other recommendations. Technology is one with a 454,560 ASH. However, there is E-rate revenue that would be offsetting that for a net budget impact of 204,560. It would provide for the Wi-Fi refresh and also it's part of that hotspot expansion that we talked about earlier for a first read consideration. Food service, we're estimating an additional 2% on food costs for a total of 169,608. The grounds department, we did receive mowing bids and trash service bids that require an additional investment in that area of 149,000 net. And then maintenance, we are looking at increasing the budget by $200,000 for internal and external repairs. And then a reminder of some of our savings. The PennMac Substitute Services Contract, after the software investment, provides us an anticipated savings of just over $103,000. We mentioned previously that the educational diagnostician position, we've been outlaying funds for those services and that would be reduced from the special education budget by around $50,000. And then this next item is a reminder that we have experienced energy savings relative to the synergistic agreement. And in the current year, or as we move into- And in the current year, or as we move into FY18, rather, we are anticipating that the increase, the 4% utility increase that we've been provided from city utilities would be offset by those additional savings. So we're not changing the budget as we move forward. Yes, sir.
Question, with the PennMac contract with the new 550 regulator, law to be signed, discussion about impact that may have or have occurred, anything?
We've actually been taking a look at that data, and I'll invite Ms. Turner to join me in that. Basically, performed a review with Kelly Services at this time of the staffs that would be affected. And it's an interesting thing, because not only do we have to pay attention to people who just work for us, we also need to know if they're working for other Missouri public education schools, because it's the same retirement system. So we are definitely looking at that holistically, and we believe that we'll still be able to easily fill the positions.
Okay. That was my biggest question.
Sure.
Can we still fill the bodies?
Yes. Yes. Okay.
Qualified bodies. We can fill bodies.
Good point. That's why.
That's what bothers me about the 550. I understand that I'm affected by the retirement, but I think they don't understand some of those people are absolute best. And I know there were districts who took advantage of, and because they did things and didn't hire people full-time, it was really not just substitutes. But I, for Springfield, Missouri, I think, I don't think that's a good thing, because I think some of those people that have just retired, if we needed them to substitute and they wanted to, I'm not sure why they wouldn't want to, but if they did, they would be our best people who would require the absolute least amount of training and understanding. So to me, that was another.
Dramatic effect, yes.
You had another cheer to the stage.
Yeah. Another kind of reaction to something that a few districts took advantage of, and I'm not sure there was ever any data to show that that was really going to cause an issue. I think, again, it was one of those things. My whole thing is, it is what it is, so we need to make sure we get qualified people there.
No bigger reason to make sure that the training is high-quality as we move into this new contract, because we're going to be bringing some other people into the classrooms, potentially, because we looked at the total number, and it's not huge.
130-ish?
Yeah, that would have over that number.
Oh, no, I don't know that all those are over.
I don't think that.
That's just how many we have.
How many we have. There was only like, when I looked at the list, I think about 40 that were over the 550 limit. So we'll have to bring a few in, but to your point, training's going to be really important, because we're going to miss some of our veterans.
Forty people probably didn't affect the retirement system too much. I mean, I think, again, it's an overreaction of something that they really didn't have to do it.
Targeting the third party. Certainly, that was the target without thinking about what it's going to do.
Yeah.
More conversations, potentially, to take place on that. Okay, so now we'll shift to other funds. We've been talking about the operating funds that really support our learners in the building. And here is some of the other work that takes place in the district. So you know that we have a debt service fund and a bond fund, and the debt service, of course, retires that debt, principal, interest, and fees that would be due each year to support bond issues that have been approved by our patrons. And then the bond funds represent that small remaining amount from our 2013 bond issue. So when we look at debt, you can see that we began with an, we're beginning with an estimated fund balance of $18,693,442. You can see there the revenue anticipated that's driven by those local tax dollars, based on the tax levy that's set, multiplied by the assessed valuation. And then the expenditures would be primarily principal and interest, and then there's this tiny amount of fees that would be included in that. We're allowed to maintain a fund balance of equal to one-year payments for debt service for principal, interest, and fees. You can see that we're coming in under that, and we always, I shouldn't say always, but in the past, I think historically, this district has truly always rolled back levy that is available to us for debt service. So we'll talk more about that when we get to August and set that debt service tax levy. With regard to the bond funds, you know you receive this information each month through the Treasurers Report, where we show you the available funds. We're just over $2.3 million. We have a very small revenue amount indicated there for this upcoming year, and that would be for interest income. And then the $2.3 million that we'll budget for expenditures would be for design work or land purchase, as has been discussed in the past. The Capital Projects Fund is our fund for major repairs for buildings and also improvements. It's also where we have to code equipment of a certain threshold, and then also lease purchase payment, for instance, our technology. So this shows you a breakdown by category of the expenditures. We've talked about the capital planning process and how all of those purchases move forward through an approval process with both the learning team and the operations team, and the detail is broken down for you there. We do have that 2016 facility for early childhood special education. There is revenue offset that we received from early childhood special education for those lease payments that we navigated last year. So the grand total expenditures would be $12,598,000 estimated revenue, $12,103,000. And you see that we're showing a slight decrease in our ending fund balance, and much of this will change as we land this fiscal year. Know that we've talked about it's a three-year rolling cycle, that some things can be done in this year, some have to be delayed a year, or even the next year beyond that. But we go through the cycle approval and budget for those accordingly. Okay, the next fund represented is the Health and Benefit Trust Fund. This is a fiduciary account for us, our self-insurance fund, and you can see that we have a very stable balance, and that's because we're enjoying our great contract with Mercy, and then also the pharmaceutical savings that we provided information to you on not long ago. So we are showing revenue of approximately $28 million. The expenditure change is relative to the pharmaceutical savings on expenditures, and then that additional investment in the wellness program of $250,000. So no increase to our insurance premiums, and employees are enjoying being fully covered for their health, for their medical insurance through Springfield Public Schools. Another fund, that's a fiduciary fund, is our Greater Ozark Center for Advanced Professional Studies, affectionately referred to as GOCAPS. This program is serving 16 regional school districts. We are the fiscal agent. Included in the expenditures, we do receive an administrative cost that's factored into that, so that we're reimbursed for our variety of services that we're provided. The estimated ending fund balance June 30 is $137,588, and we see that grow slightly. And through that, we're also reducing tuition next year on a per student, per semester basis from $1,200 in the current year to $1,100 next year. Yes, sir.
Do you have a goal for the fund balance?
Our goal is that it's a self-funded program. And in my, in my mind, we don't have any specific goal. We do incur costs and then reimburse ourselves for those. So ideally, you could say that half a semester of expenditures for salary would be reasonable. We reimburse ourselves on a semester basis.
We've adjusted that tuition down twice already. I mean, and that's the good work of our partners. I mean, we have so many great partners that provide so many resources to make this go. We started at $1,500 per semester, went to $1,200 for this year, adjusted $1,100, because our goal is not to grow that balance anymore. If the program grows significantly, then you might want a little stronger balance, but in its current size, you feel like it's in a good spot. So we'll just adjust the tuition annually.
Okay.
Don't want to overcorrect either to where we dropped it down. Okay? So I am going to tell you that I do not expect that you'll be able to read the next slide coming up. This is a reminder that this document will be posted. It's the general budget summary and primary changes document that shows you by fund the primary changes that have been presented to you this evening. And I do want to highlight one thing, though, and it's on page two. So there's page one that you cannot read, and here's page two. And the important note to highlight for you is that a balanced operating budget is presented for your consideration at the June 27 meeting, and we will take a closer look at that fund balance percentage moving forward. These slides show you a comparative between current year and next year. And you can see that in many cases, there are next to zero changes, although the dollar amounts have changed. So in the current year, we're estimating approximately $257,727 for our operating funds. And you can see that about 61% of that is local, and 27% state, 11% federal, and then some small amounts through county and other. Other could be tuition payments, payments received from other districts. If we take a look now at FY18, you can see that the total has increased to $267,811, and you see that now local 63.92%. Some fluctuations there with state as well. This is, again, on the revenue front, a decrease in federal. Nothing significant, but it has slightly changed some of those percentages. If we take a look at expenditures, you can see that currently, we're estimating 79% of our operating budget is in salary and benefits for people, 10% in purchase services, and 11% in supplies, and that's supporting $255,447 in estimated expenditures current year. And in this situation, you go to the current, the next year projected, the percentages are identical. 79% salary and benefits, 10% purchase services, 11% supplies and energy, but the budget total projected is $267,200,000. This slide shows you the distribution of new funds. So we identified the new revenues and the carryover revenue or fund balance, and you can see that the distribution here is supporting primarily people in the form of salary and benefits. 74% for either new positions recommended or providing allocations for cost of living and step increases for existing staffs. 2% is for purchase services, and the supplies is 24%, but it does include a placeholder of $500,000 for contingency for operations as we move into the year. This is a snapshot of our fund balance trajectory, the trend line there. You can see that we are enjoying a very stable fund balance percentage, and you can see that in 2014, we were at 17%. We've continued along that line, and we are projecting now a 17% fund balance percentage for FY18. The red line represents the threshold that if a district falls below that threshold, 3%, you're considered financially stressed. And that is something that most districts avoid at all costs. We do have a board policy that guides us and directs us if we fall below 15%. So we continue to watch that. Oh, see it a little closer.
Watch it right now.
So, stable operating fund balance percentage and cash balance information. So while we are showing you a stable fund balance percentage, highlighting for you that that, the cash balance itself has actually changed, because it's a simple calculation that takes the total amount in your bank account and divides it by your operating expenditures. So FY14, we were at a 17% ending fund balance percentage, and we had $38.6 million in the bank. FY18, again, 17%, but the fund balance has grown to $45.428 million in the bank. So that number will continue to change. And you may wonder, well, how many days could we operate if we didn't receive another dime from anyone? And while it sounds like a lot of money, $45,428,000, it is not. Based on a 260-day operation, that would be 44.2 days of operating funds for us. Okay. Just that final reminder that we will be.
Yeah, that's a good note. That's a good note, Steve.
Sounds like so much. It does. We spend a lot. We do.
We're going to let you in positively.
So, again, the comprehensive budget document will be posted for your review prior to the June 27 meeting. I will tell you, though, it will be just-in-time delivery, because we will be posting final payrolls that Friday, and then producing documents. It could be that it will run over the weekend before we're actually able to upload the final document, but we'll get it in your hands, and we don't anticipate a lot of changes other than what would come through in the current year affecting our beginning balances. So, and with that, I should thank the whole team behind this work. The finance team, as well as other leaders in the system, have worked tirelessly to provide us with this information to be included in this report. So I appreciate that you've asked questions or made comments as we've gone along, but do you have any remaining questions?
At this weekend's conference, we were reminded that the, while the budget shows, the state budget shows the foundation formula fully funded, that money has not been appropriated.
Ah, yes.
Yeah, it's not come to us. What do we know, what do we speculate on holdbacks or anything like that?
Well, I will go to my crystal ball. Or Jones. No, actually, I should say, and I didn't say it before, but with regard to the basic formula that we have provided in this budget, if we're truly fully funded, that would mean we would have a state adequacy target of $6,241.
Okay.
Included in this budget, because we are, from the show-me state, right? We need to see it. We, we have realistically budgeted $6,220 for state adequacy target. And if you'd like to add anything to that?
Yeah, so that's a, it's a pretty aggressive number, because we believe that we should budget and make them send it to us, right? They told us they're going to. So $6,220 is kind of a little conservative in it, but not much. So we believe, based on lots of conversations with both governor's office, as well as the House and Senate budget areas, that they believe they can fund it, right? They know revenues are coming in a little shorter this year, and we are basing this on somewhere around a 3, 3.6%, I think is the estimated revenue growth necessary for next year. So it's all in whether the economy grows, right? That's the key component. I do know that they were, I think, fairly disciplined in the approach. I give all kinds of kudos to Scott Fitzpatrick, the House Budget Chair, who's done a great job of really budgeting, I think appropriately, even leaving some cushion in their budget for supplements, right? Which has not always been the case. Mid-year supplements are a part of state budgets every year. The January, different departments are coming back saying we need supplement. They've left money in the budget for supplements, so I think they've done a good job planning, but it still requires growth to get there. We are seeing growth. We're not seeing as much growth as we possibly need. We also know that there are some budget cuts that are going into effect, some that we, that have gone in historically, the corporate franchise tax piece, and we're not sure if we've hit the bottom yet. It's, looks like it's stabilizing, but we probably will know better in 30 to 60 days, as well as the first year of a five-year income tax cut that should be enacted based on what we believe, but they built that into the budget. So I think the budget has been constructed appropriately, but it still requires growth, right? So it's really important that our state grow for us to hit those numbers. Feedback that we've received is if, and we hate, just because I want to ask the question. So if you get it, where's the withhold's going to come? It seems like a really strong commitment to the formula staying whole at this point. I think they would likely go to transportation as the primary cut. Selfishly, that's where I want them to go, because it hurts us less.
Of course.
Right? Just as a district, it hurts different districts differently. If I was in a high-rural district with a lot of miles, I would be in a different conversation, right? But in the big scheme, if they go to transportation, it hurts us less than it hurts some others. So I feel like we're okay. I think it's a aggressive budget, but there's still a little wiggle here and there, and so if something would come out that would hit us. The good news for us is most of, 60-plus percent of our revenue comes local, right? So our stability is in our local community, in our local environment, and it AV appears to be growing. New construction is projected to have another good year, we see at this point, and hopefully the trend is moving. As we drive around the streets, you see good trend in the community, I think. So that also provides some stability to us, where we're 62% locally funded as compared to some other districts with not high AV that might be 80% state-funded, they, which exists not far from us, right? They are always taking a higher risk when they put the number in. So they may not go 6220, they may go 6200 or 6190 on their SAT, because when they get hit, it hurts really, really hard. So that's a long answer to your question.
You know, I sometimes think that we spend too much time talking about what the state's doing for that very reason, that the majority of our revenue doing for that very reason, that the majority of our revenue comes locally, and it's much more reliable.
It is. It's a much more stable revenue stream, we think. Hopefully continues to be. That's why it's really important that our community continues to grow because that is the most important revenue source that we have.
Yeah.
We are one of the drivers.
You have questions?
We are.
On the budget.
Not for Carol. If we've got comments on the budget, but it's not for Carol.
Yeah, so anybody, us, me, anyone? Yep, it's a whole table conversation, I think, so.
Okay, because I don't want her, just keep standing.
She's been standing a long time.
She's part of the wellness program.
There you go. Maybe she could be doing some steps or something.
She's the wellness program, that's right.
And I don't want to stipend.
My, one of my first concerns with the budget when I looked at it was there was flat enrollment, but 22 and 1/2 new positions. And the only, my reasoning for that was I've been through times when there was less money, no money, we had to start taking away jobs, and we had to protect the classroom. And with very few of the 22.5 actually in the classroom, then would these jobs, would these people be affected? You know, are these some that, and maybe it'll never be bad again, you know? I just don't think that'll, I just think that there'll be times when you'll, it'll be a much more difficult budget time to do that. But in looking at those 22.5, I think most of those were in support of current programs that if they're going to work, we're going to have to have those positions. And if we don't go ahead and put them in, then what we're doing with Ignite and analyzing the data, I mean, if we don't have people there, then, you know, do we even know what's effective and what's not? So that, after looking at that more, I'm much less or not concerned at all about that now. I still think if you hit one of those years, some of these people wouldn't, you wouldn't employ some of these people. You wouldn't be asking us to approve those positions, but we're not there, so it'll help our district. At one point in time, as we looked at students who had a gap in learning and were behind, there were really two things to do. Stop the others from learning so they can catch up, or do something for them to catch up. There's only two, two options that I could think of. So we looked at more time for those students to catch up who started out behind, and, and I was very excited about the Robertson concept at that time because that was our first, I think, really organized belief that here's something different. We've moved the needle a little bit, but not much. So I've come, my belief in that time is the answer may not be correct in talking to Mike and looking, because, you know, I mean, I think ELE is going to be great if done correctly. Explores great, but how much time is enough time? A lot of us were...
Enough time to do what?
How much time can kids really focus on being able to learn? We go too long at a board meeting, and we're adults, and we're ready to check out. So if kids have been to school all day, all day long, and then we have an after-school program, this is after, in addition to, and then we have summer in addition to, where is there a time where it's, and we're doing real, because we say it's engaging, relevant, and personal during the day, and we've got bells and whistles and computers and people doing everything, then what happens after school in these programs that we can really give these kids more time? I'm not sure, been talking to John and Mike, that time is one of those factors, but I've come to believe it's just not time anymore that's the answer for those kids. It's really going to have to be very focused on where they are individually, and I know now we have some things to be able to do that. So we had after-school programs for years in Springfield, but I'm not sure they weren't after-school academic, they were just babysitting after-school for parents who needed that help. So as we do this, focus, I'm, get concerned on how much time can a five-year-old, six-year-old spend focused on academic learning, no matter how many exciting, personal things you have for them before they check out? Or they say, I've had enough for today, you know? I need to just go out and play or do something that's not. So I think we've got a, we keep, we're adding time, and I still believe that's a big factor, but it's kind of like filling the substitute things. We can keep adding more time for them, and John even told me some schools keep kids to seven and eight o'clock at night. So if, if we do that, I just think we've got to be very careful that what we're doing is about those kids' learning and at what point are they going to check out on us. And I guess that's why my whole focus now is where we spend the time's got to be on early childhood because we're going to catch them up. So we need to catch them up by the time they start in our system rather than trying to catch them up after we've got them in the normal system. So I'm, I, I'm excited, but I also know all of us have thresholds to where just, and adding more time doesn't mean they're going to learn more, or it's going to happen.
Yeah, I guess I would, on, on one level, at least to a degree, I might agree with that. To me, the question, I would recast a question a little differently, and that would be, how do we know that the additional investment of time or technology or whatever pays off academically, intellectually, socio-emotionally? I mean, I think that, to me, the metric will be, are we moving the needle in a substantive way? And so A, we need to be able to define the needle and know it when we see it, and B, and measure how far it goes in some ways. So I, I don't know. To me, that, it's an open question, but I think it's a question that can be answered. We just have to position ourselves to answer that question.
I think to your point, it's, design matters, right? It's not, as we design, explore extra time, and as we design ELP, it's around, what does it look like? What's it, what are we trying to accomplish? And then how are we going to make sure that we're doing that? And if we're not, how do we adjust? Because I don't think less time's the answer, especially for kids that are highly at risk, and that's really in this ELP environment, the main target. But it's about designing that time to be most effective because there, there has to be breaks in that. There has to be downtimes for physical movement and activity and all those kind of things. And so if you don't design it well, it can be a, almost feel like punishment, right? And that's what I think extended learning used to look like, you know, historically, not just here, but everywhere in education, right? I mean, that's what summer school was.
I was going to say, so instead of our summer school, we, we know we can rebrand things and make things fresh.
Right. And that's what I think ELP, we want to do the exact same thing. Now, we want to hit the standards that these kids are struggling with because that's why they've been identified for additional state resources. But we also want to do it in a way, to Bruce's point, that it doesn't feel, oh, a burden to learn, or I'm exhausted of the learning environment. So I think that's finding our balance and designing it right, so.
Wouldn't it be more individualized? I mean, it would have to be, correct?
That is certainly the goal, right? Because the, the environment gets smaller, the class size gets smaller, the data...
So it's not just about time, it's about, in design, but it's about individualizing the learning.
Yeah, that's exactly.
To target those areas.
One of the things that Mike talks about a lot is giving kids opportunities to learn in different ways and have different experiences. Because as someone who was a kid when we went out and played when we weren't at school, raising kids who are on some kind of screen if they're not in school. We have to provide different opportunities that are engaging, but that's what a lot of them are doing if they're not there. And then, of course, as we know, some of them aren't getting meals and aren't getting any kind of other stimulation. So I certainly agree with you that we have to be thoughtful about what it is, but I think that we are with the things that we're trying to do differently, expand what, what that concept means, so we're outside the box of it. But I just am very saddened by how many of them are on the screen if they're not engaged, if they're not with us. We limit the time at my house. My, my daughters tell me to stop telling people that. Dan has features, he can stop the madness.
Other questions on the budget?
We've got, obviously, three weeks to give us feedback, and we'll continue to...
Thank you.
Take that, and...
Thank you.
Welcome.
Yeah, we've got a little time before this land, so we're working.
Thank you, Carol.
We look forward to the PowerPoint you bring to us next week.
The PowerPoint?
Not the prezi.
It, actually, at the next meeting, it will simply be the budget document that will be posted. It will support all that has been provided.
All right. Moving on public comments, we have any...
Yeah, we do have. We've been here two hours and three minutes, and I think the signals I'm getting is, let's take a break.
Switch time.
For at least a five-minute SPS break.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to 2.01, secondary programming. Shane?
All right. Well, good evening. We're just going to jump in. The first thing I want to know specifically, Jill, is that this is a presentation, not a prezi, so. So that's a secondary call.
We're ahead of my friends.
Keep doing your bit up.
Yeah. I do want to introduce a few people that are here with us tonight. We're very excited to bring a secondary update, and Dr. Dawson kind of gave us a good segue for a pleasure conversation about Imagine SPS, where we came from and the process there. And this is kind of the result of that thinking, and so we're going to talk a little bit about where we're going from here. I do want to thank Dr. Winn, Dr. Caldwell, Mr. Moore, Ms. Quinn for being here tonight. And they also have some guests with them that they will introduce later as well. I'm not going to try to say all their names, but I do thank them for being here and for sticking around with us to the end, to the good end. So tonight, again, three themes we're going to talk about. We're going to talk about kind of the why, the challenge that we're facing and we're trying to meet, and it's very related to the conversation that you just had about engaging kids and truly designing things that are engaging for kids day in and day out. The second thing we're talking about is the process we went through, and then lastly, kind of the prototype or kind of what we're going to try to do about the challenge. So we'll jump in. First of all, the why, kind of understanding and defining our challenge. I won't go in depth about Imagine SPS, but as you know, they did that experience. The three factors that came out of that were, one, learning environment, looking at how could the learning environment potentially be changed to better the experience for kids and staff. Giving students choice. When they went through that process, they found that there was not a great deal of choice for kids daily. And then third was potentially the schedule. Is the schedule something that we want to look at? So those were the original driving factors of Imagine SPS that guided us to take some of the visits and do what we have done over the past year.
Shane?
Yes.
Can you remind us how you define staff? So I know principals were involved. Were there administrators and teachers or like...
In the Imagine SPS experience?
Yes.
Yes.
It was a little bit of everybody.
Yeah, when I say staff, teachers.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it was principals, teachers, administrators, or not?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was all of that.
Principals, administrators, yeah.
And some counselors, I think.
Okay.
And you're talking about the Imagine SPS.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't, I actually wasn't here.
I know you weren't, yeah.
But what I hear about it is, yeah.
Okay.
That I spent time as a student and empathized. So that was kind of the why, and I'm going to just share a little bit of data with you. This first graph that you see is a national Gallup poll. It says 2016, but it's from a fall of 2015 survey that really shows the decline, I think you guys may have seen this somewhere in the past, of student engagement from fifth grade all the way through 12th grade, it falls precipitously. And so that is, again, part of the why behind what we're wanting to do. If you look at our own data, so bringing it here locally to Springfield, this is our most recent Panorama survey data from this spring. If you look, it's, again, it's a little small, but 7,010 student responses from sixth through 12th grade this spring responded to these questions about their level of engagement in school. The overall total is 30% responded favorably to saying that they're engaged in school. If you kind of break it down to the question, of course, there's a spectrum there, 21 to 36 on specific questions, 21 being the lowest about how often you talk about ideas in your classes outside of school, probably no surprise, right? And the highest at 36 about in your classes, how eager are you to participate? So generally, a third of them say that they are favorable to eagerly participating in class. We wanted to compare it to the national survey results through Panorama's data, and our 30% is just a little bit lower than the national average in comparison. The next item we wanted to show you is how our students value school, again, over 7,000 responses, 51% responded favorably. The range is a bit wider on this one, all the way from 27 to 84. Lowest at 27, how often you use ideas, again, similar to the other one, outside of school in your daily life, not much. 84%, how important is it to you to do well in your classes? That's pretty high. I think I, it'd be fun to speculate why they think it is important to do well in class, whether that's related to college or related to, if I don't, my parents will do this. I mean, there's probably a lot of reasons why that is so high. And then the 51%, if you compare it to the national, it's lower than the national average by, by length. So again, I thought that was pretty apt to show our data, again, showing the why behind where we're going with this. Dr. Winn's going to get up here and show a little bit of...
Aleman has a question.
Yes.
How many years of SPS student engagement data do we have like this?
That's a good question. This specific data is only from this spring.
Okay.
That'd be interesting to see. I don't know if we know this.
This is our first implementation, Panorama, with this tool, with these direct questions to students.
And how did we get the link out to students to ask them to participate? And how are they encouraged to take this?
It was at the site, little principals, teachers engage in telling them to do it through their Chromebooks, and our principals may be able to say, they really had, you really had to promote that.
We said, all the students at Glendale received an email on Canvas that had the link, and then the teachers directed them to do that, and all the parents at Glendale also received it through their Canvas email with the link.
And do we have data based on schools for engagement?
They do, yeah. And, yeah, Amy St. John would be able to have that, I assume.
And that just happened this spring, first time we've done it.
Yeah. Okay.
That's a good question about sites.
So have you shared this with high school teachers?
Not yet, no.
Are you going to?
I, I think there's a plan to...
I think they need to see it.
I do, too. This was actually hot off the press. I asked for this for this presentation and got it about four or five days ago.
I thought you were going to say four or five hours ago.
Yeah, no, just a bit. But it was, they did it solely for me for this presentation, but I imagine that they could.
It's part of the next steps, if we roll out of that data set.
I think the tragedy is the second number right there, the 67%. How useful do you think school will be to you in the future? But then if you go back a slide, we're, that's two out of three, 67% is two out of three kids, but one out of three only says that they're, they're, they're even eager to participate.
Right.
And so they think it's valuable, but they're participating. And so we're losing two kids, and, and one of those kids knows that it's important. And that is just tragic.
Go ahead. I was just going to, in 10 words or less, define engagement. Is that involved? Is that connected? Is that, I mean, to me, engagement is somewhat of the either the holder to some degree, and I'm not, though I, I believe in all this, I just, how, how do we define what engagement? And that's what you're trying to get at with these questions, I understand, but to me, some of it seems like physical, some of it feels like psychological, whether you're engaged or you feel connected, which you may or may not physically, other than being there, involved in activities or whatever. I just...
Well, so to me, four words come to mind, and we actually just, Mike and I just talked about this two minutes ago, focused, involved, passionate, and interested, to me. I mean, if a kid, my kid, my 12-year-old is passionate or interested about what she's doing in school, she's engaged. doing in school, she's engaged. Because I think, again, we were talking about, sometimes kids can be, look like they're focused, but they're not necessarily, necessarily engaged. They may be sitting there staring at the screen, that's not engagement, but if they're passionate and interested in what's happening at the screen, they're engaged.
What was important? Say that again.
Focused, involved, passionate, and interested.
And if you see several of these questions, dig at those things, right? So how interested are you? How excited are you? How important it is to you? So these, try to roll up, and so that's why you get the five questions, and then they roll up into an engagement kind of matrix, right, out of those areas, and they're not identical to those, but they are overlapping for sure.
I would never ask for 10 words or less.
Never. Charles would never do that.
But, you know, I think that's a really good point, though, because I could imagine, how eager are you to participate? I could imagine a student otherwise being really interested, even really passionate, but it's that young man or young woman who sits in the back of the room who just listens? It's not participating in any traditional sense, right, but is actively engaged. So I think it's kind of a, potentially a fuzzy, but I'm still concerned that it's at 36%.
Sure.
I mean, because that's not going to be, you know, the remaining percent would not fall into that category. But I do think it's interesting that participate is kind of a behavioral sort of thing that engagement may or may not be, because it can be an intellectual.
I'm sure you're pretty concerned that we're on slide five, and this is the level of engagement, but it shouldn't be, it should show you how engaged we are.
There you go. Nice connection.
I know, yes. So Panorama, is that the right term, is the tool or the platform? The vendor. So how you define engagement can be defined in academics a lot of different ways, and then there are specific created tools that help you measure that defined engagement. So did Panorama, do they already have a defined how they're defining engagement, and they are using their self-created, valid and reliable tool to measure that? Or are they using an industry standard? So for instance, the Gallup Student Poll has already been tested, it's reliable, and there's the data, you can track it. And so I guess my question is, what instrument? Panorama is the vehicle in which to get the information, but what instrument are we actually using to measure student engagement with this?
It's the Panorama tool that they've developed based on their research and engagement with, so they have a set of engagement questions that they provide for us. They give us, we get to add things if we want, like our leadership survey and those kind of things, and we can use the tool for other things with them. Engagement survey, they have staff engagement surveys, they have all kinds of different ones, and then they give us comps to their national dataset, too. That's what we're able to compare against, so. I don't know that they pull from Gallup as their research base.
But there's others.
Right, there's lots of different tools, we know, right? There's different companies that have engagement metrics.
So this one, the two slides that you've selected to show us are valuing school and school engagement. Those are two separate factors. Are there, were there more factors that were measured, but you're just showing us these two?
Yes, they were the most that I thought were pertinent to.
Okay.
Our approach, yeah.
I'm a big advocate for measuring engagement along with other measures. I think engagement shows us more, if you can measure student engagement, academic engagement, that's a better indicator of the possibility for increased learning than grades do any day. So I'm thrilled to see us measuring this because it gives us some metrics to, to look at our programming.
That's great.
Okay. I think we're ready for.
Dr. Winn's going to talk.
You can go on to slide six. The discovery, this was, this phase, there's a couple of slides that are going to talk about the discovery phase in the building analysis process. We did school visits, we engaged building leaders, all principals at high schools and middle schools, counselors, we used curriculum staff and some staff from the innovation team to help us build consensus from the visits. The feedback that we received from our school visits shifted the focus from the three factors that came out from SPS, from Imagine SPS, to the five that are listed on the screen. Smaller learning communities, project-based learning, student choice, and it was the same. It was one of the three that were, that was in the initial Imagine SPS. Relationships came out and experiences were one, the five things that came out from our visits and feedback from that discovery group.
How many schools, when you say school visits?
Our.
You're talking about outside of our district, you went and visited other schools?
That's correct.
Okay. And how many schools did this group?
We took three of kind of official Imagine SPS visits.
Okay.
And in addition, we took a team to Nashville to look at their school district. The high school principals and the two of us went to Omaha on a fifth visit, just to look at a high school. So five separate districts.
Okay.
Some of them were multiple schools within that, we looked at middle schools.
Sure. Okay.
And the culminating event from the team, from our visits with our high school principals, part of that discovery process was getting their feedback. So we did a metimeter, a Wordle, and in three words or less, they shared their main takeaways from our, our school, from the district visits that we went on. And interesting, you'll see some of the, some of the same word choices for the high school team as on our next slide for the middle school team. So choice came out most often, relationships, pathways, internships, opportunities for all, some of the things that you all were talking about even in the conversation before. And the second slide is our middle school team feedback, and relationships were the strongest. Smaller learning communities came out many times in three words or less, and I think we had a little bit, this group was a little bit more interested in doing the three words or less, but this is for middle school. So it was all good, so.
Spaced for in.
A little bit different.
So.
Some hashtags, yeah.
Okay, so kind of all that has led up to, so what now what, right? So now we're going to talk a little bit about what we would like to try, what we'd like to potentially do as a prototype of kind of meeting this challenge. So as a reminder, those are the five elements that came out that kind of morphed throughout our learning process. And on the last couple of visits, we really started to focus on college and career academies, mainly because of the smaller learning community piece that really came out of our conversations that our principals and those involved said, we're really seeing the small learning communities is a great approach, is what's engaging kids. And so we looked at that at a couple of places, again, specifically Nashville and Atlanta. And so we're really looking at college and career academies as a potential approach and starting small with our freshmen and doing a freshman academy as a proof of concept. And what that might look like, and I'll kind of do a caveat, that until we do our strategic planning and really engage the school, Glendale, Hillcrest, and their communities, we won't know real specifics on what it will look like. But what we've seen is that freshmen are engaged in some sort of freshman course or freshman seminar where they explore multiple career pathways to see what they're interested in, see where their passion is that we're talking about, that then they would eventually identify as a sophomore with some sort of academy. So for instance, at Hillcrest, they might, five or six career pathways might emerge as that need for their community. The freshmen would do some sort of PBL, some experiences with those to determine if they are really engaged and want to pursue this further later in their high school career. Another piece of that freshman academy, as we talked, as we know, freshmen sometimes have a hard time transitioning to high school or middle school, high school. It'd be great to intensify those relationships individualized with those freshman teachers that are really responsible for those kids, making it more of a team approach to get those freshmen better transitioned to the high school. On the vendors and consultants, we feel like we probably need some support in doing this work. And again, that came about, at the beginning of this process, I don't think we were really thinking that, but as we saw some of these schools, each of those schools was engaged with one of these three vendors or consultants to help them get their academies off the ground. So we've had some conversations with each just to start getting information, seeing what their resources are, what their services are. And so these are the three that we think, again, going back to the budget that Dr. Dawson mentioned, may apply when we put out there to get some support for this.
Sure. But I think that would depend on how we identified what schools to go look at, because if vendors were promoting those because they had been successful there, that would mean less to me than if we used some other independent measure to decide to go see those, and then we discovered that they were vendor-dependent.
Right.
So can you talk to that?
A little, yeah, I can, a little bit. Originally, really what we did was me and Ben and Dr. Dawson and Dr. Junge kind of looking at, in the nation, what school districts were doing innovative things, specifically high school, and even engaged with Lord Richardson to get some, who's, I guess, how do you describe him? They change agent, change speaker, and asked him what he has seen as far as innovative schools with no talk at all about vendors or consultants. And so I wish, I wish it were a little more scientific than that, but it worked.
No, that's okay.
It was more where we want to see some.
But sometimes vendors are really thoughtful about directing you to places where, and so the way you did it is fine with me, it doesn't have to be scientific.
Right.
But I didn't want it to be led by them, because then, of course, we would conclude that they were helpful in the places they led us to, but you used your own.
We discovered them in the process, not, we wouldn't have to them to tell us where to go.
So are you saying all three of those vendors, consultants, could do the same thing?
Good question. They each kind of have their niche.
Okay.
Real quickly, the top ones, Still Dynamics, is a little more about getting you off the ground initially and identifying your current pathways, working with the chamber in your city to what, does your industry support and need as far as careers? The second one, the high schools at work, is a little more about the nitty-gritty, and we actually went to that conference, high schools at work, and they get real into the details about what it looks like in curriculum. The third one, Forward NGL, is literally an education arm of Forward, and they're more about community engagement and coming in initially to engage your community with your school district in this work. So I kind of have my thoughts on each about what we might need.
I'm sure they all have pros and cons.
They do, yeah. So does that?
So you're saying that, just with the comment, that we think these three vendors will apply, so if there is a budget line for support, they would apply and you would?
We build an RFP based on what we want.
But there may be more than those three.
There may be.
So you're just throwing that out there.
Those are the ones we've seen and encountered at this.
They're the ones I'm, they're the ones I'm familiar with. And back to Jill's question, again, I could not have named any of these three back in September before trips, but as we went, we saw, oh, they're with Still Dynamics, or they're with, it was interesting to learn about.
That's good, yeah. If or when this is approved and you move forward, I think it would be, I think it'd be really interesting for the group to look at anyone who applies and talk to the school districts that they're, that they're happy with their work, and the school districts that they're not happy with their work.
Yeah.
Because I think it would be equally of value before making a selection.
Almost like reference checks.
Absolutely.
A full list of their clients.
Yeah.
We could get to one, too.
Do these guys ever collaborate together?
You know.
They're consultants.
The quick answer is not much. There's actually.
Yeah, they probably think they, you know.
They're better than the other one.
The only thing that they agree, is they get together and they'll tell you how awful the third one is.
Third one.
And seriously, they will tell you the cons of the other. They're very polite about it, and they'll say, you know, there are others that will say they do this and they don't say that. So, yeah, they don't really work. But the NCAC is kind of an overarching governing board for all of these, that, like, high schools at work and Forward NGL subscribe to NCAC. Still Dynamics is kind of an arm of NCAC, consulting arm, so they, there's kind of that overarching board, is the right word, in the organization.
It seems to me that some groups are strong in some areas and others are strong in others, they could come together and.
Yeah. So a potential timeline, again, if this is all approved and we move forward, this coming fall, we would, well, first of all, this coming school year is a planning year. Fall, we would do community and school engagement in our two schools that you'll hear from here in a minute, culminating in a completed strategic plan for those two schools of what freshman academies and beyond would look like. Then in the winter, we would do some course development for those freshman courses, some teacher and leader training, and then our goal would be in August, so a year from this coming August, to begin our freshman academies at Glendale and Hillcrest. So without further ado, speaking of Glendale and Hillcrest, I'm going to introduce Dr. Caldwell, and she'll introduce her team, and she's going to talk a little bit about where Glendale is at, what they're going to do.
Well, thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. We are very excited to redefine the high school experience at Glendale, and we have about 20 staff members that have started discussions and are committed to changing their instructional delivery model so that students have a more engaging, relevant, personalized experience. And over the course of this past school year, we spent a lot of time at Glendale rewriting our mission statement to align to these practices that we see our students needing as they move into the future. And so at Glendale, we want to inspire personally-driven, community-focused, and globally-connected learners. And our team of 20 teachers, we want to lead the way with this. And so tonight with us, I have Tammy Quinn, and she's our Director of Quest, and Abby Packingham, she's a member of the Class of 2017, and Teacher William Thomas, and they're here with me tonight to add to this discussion. And I know that you're aware that Glendale already offers an innovative learning community that we call Quest at GHS. And Quest is similar to the academy-type instructional delivery model we would like to explore, and so we are fortunate to be able to capitalize on Ms. Quinn's experience with starting that program, and so she's going to share with you just briefly.
Thank you. Basically, I'd just like to talk about the PBL process. This is an opportunity for a school within a school, and these students are engaged, they are passionate, they are astounding in their excitement for their education. We have a culture that is unique to Quest, but also encompasses Glendale, and so they are not outsiders. They see Quest as part of their identity, and they see their education as something that they own and they drive. They are passionate when they meet with their facilitators, and they have conversations about why this is a better idea than what the adults came up with, and this is how we see this going, and why can't we do it this way? And what do you mean the board's not going to show up for our presentation? Because they have invited anybody and everybody, and.
We make sure there's representation.
They just want you there all the time, that's the problem. I think that we have had a unique opportunity, and I believe that while Quest is not for everyone, small learning communities are for everyone. And so I'm going to leave my expert, Abby Packingham, to talk about her experience with both Capstone and with Quest.
Hi, everyone. I'm Abby Packingham. I just graduated from Glendale a couple of weeks ago, which was great. So Capstone, basically, if you don't know about it, it is a project-based learning program for seniors. Specifically, you take it your senior year in Quest, and you get to go out in the field, intern anywhere that interests you if they let you, and that was a really great experience for me. I interned with the Women's Medical Respite, which is a nonprofit that helps homeless women transition from the hospital back to life on the streets, and I organized a fundraiser for them, which was so great, and I loved the experience. That experience now allows me to, I'm the marketing director for a local DJ company, which I would never have that experience without Capstone. So briefly, some of the main things that I really benefited from with Capstone was my college and career readiness. I wasn't expecting to be so ready to go into a career and not wanting to go into my Gen Eds my freshman year of college, I just want to get into business school and get going. Some other things, the really valuable experiences I had, I was truly engaged the entire time. I can't imagine my senior year having so much senioritis, but also not having Capstone because it kept me engaged my whole senior year, and I really don't know what I would have done without it. I mean, it really gave me those valuable experiences that were relevant to my life and my future and my career. And I also had some really great relationships with my teachers that I will never forget, and I love them all so much, we all cried at the beginning of the year. So those experiences were really relevant and exciting for me, and I loved it all so much. And if you have any more questions about it, feel free to ask me, I'm very passionate about it, so thank you for your time.
So when did you? So you can't run away. Yeah, okay. Don't ask us for questions and then turn your. So when did you start Quest?
I started my sophomore year when the program very first began.
Okay, all right. And so then your senior, Capstone course was your senior year, but.
Yeah, it was the whole year I took senior at Capstone. Some people only did half the year, but I started my, at the beginning of the year, building my resume, learning how to apply to colleges, which was really helpful because I wasn't thinking about it at all at the beginning of my senior year, and building resume was also really nice. So I did that for my whole year, but I did it for those three years that it was available to me.
And were you a Glendale freshman student originally?
Yes.
Because is Quest open across district, or, remind me?
Most of our years come from Pershing and Hickory simply because of busing, most freshmen can't drive, and parents have a difficult time getting them from across town. We do have a few that come over from Hillcrest, and she hits the bus at about a quarter to six.
Wow.
And she gets there, and then she gets home about one thirty. But she wants to do it, and she does it well.
Wow, okay.
Abby, we started with Abby's class, they are a getting big class, but it was a freshman and sophomore beginning, so Abby's class is our first graduate senior class.
Okay, awesome.
Very impressive.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm William Thomas, this will be my fifth year teaching, and on top of Quest, that's a small learning community, we have another small learning community at Glendale, and that's Project Lead the Way. And I am able to work with another teacher, Ms. Canelle, to be able to run that program. Kind of the things that we do through Project Lead the Way is that personalization. We start the kids out in an intro to engineering class, and then from there, they're able to personalize their learning through different types of STEM careers, and STEM readiness for either the college that they want to choose or the workforce. This past year, we were able to partner with MoDOT, which was super exciting, for them to come in and teach the classes and be able to offer those experiences and bring in different types of engineers that they have, even if they aren't going to go into that type of engineering, to lead them to the college that they really felt that they could find their passion for. Some of the exciting things that MoDOT offered were some internships, even through the Capstones, through Project Lead the Way and Quest, and students were able to definitely personalize that learning through engineering and the STEM models. One of the things that the Capstone did this year, four students were able to come together in Project Lead the Way and Quest to provide a capstone about Eden's Village, they were able to build a tiny home for that village, and not necessarily just the building aspect, but there was a student in there that his strengths were towards the more marketing and being able to be in front of someone and going out into the community and talking. When those other students kind of fell behind, he was able to step up and help lead them to that. So I think these small learning communities that we could offer at Glendale and branch away from Quest and PLZW, maybe offer some more through the academies model, will be definitely cohesive as we get through the graduating classes.
And, I'm sorry. And that's my question, is are you suggesting that Project Lead the Way and Quest would remain in effect, and the freshman academy would start, and they would all be running within Glendale?
We're just not really sure.
Okay.
I mean, I think, and we've been very brief tonight, but I think that we just kind of wanted to bring some things to your attention to show, even though this has been a nine-month learning process, we've actually been in this learning process for a while now, so it's been longer than nine months for us. So I think what we were trying to do tonight is to show you that we really are ready to move forward, we have some experience behind this, and we understand the concepts behind the learning communities, and we know how it impacts our students, and so we are very eager for your blessing to move forward, to explore what other small learning communities could we offer at Glendale High School. And I don't really know for sure that we know what they would look like, because we want our students to have a strong voice in that, we want our patrons, all of our stakeholders to have a really strong voice in what those small communities might look like. So we definitely see Project Lead the Way as a very successful program that we would like to see incorporated somewhere within our small learning communities, but would Project Lead the Way be a small learning community? I don't know. I think that to say that would be almost a little dangerous right now, because we don't want to put a parameter on that, you know, two or three months down the road, as we start exploring, we see it actually fit nicely within one or two other small learning communities. And so we are definitely committed to Quest, we've seen tremendous success in that program, and feel like project-based learning really appeals to a number of students, and so we definitely want to keep that component. But what it would look like in the bigger picture, when every, I don't think we'll probably even know two, three years down the road, because I don't think that we'll be able to jump in and develop every learning academy that we may eventually need at Glendale High School, but just to kind of highlight some of the things that show Glendale's ready, Glendale's ready to move forward, and that was our approach.
I think that's the whole point, is this would be a strategic planning initiative, right? To get the right people in the room, have the conversations, and figure out what fits, what doesn't.
And we have a lot of the right people at Glendale High School. We opened this up for discussion this spring, and William was one of the teachers, is like, I want to be a part of that. And so we've had our original meeting with teachers, and we just called it Innovative Conversations, we had seventeen, fifteen, seventeen staff members, and then since then, we've had people say, hey.
What were you all talking about?
I want to be a part of that. And so it's, and that's not even including the number of teachers that are involved in Quest. So if you add, you know, the 10 teachers that are really, you know, involved in the Quest program, we've got 30 staff members, that's getting close to half of our staff, that's saying, you know, we're really interested in exploring what we can do to really engage and personalize and make the learning relevant for our kids, so that they leave us college or career ready.
Jill. Well, you know from past conversations, I'm a big fan of all this. And I apologize, because I'm getting a lot of information tonight, and I may be saturated, so I apologize if I miss this. Could you give me an idea of how many kids were involved in the first year of Quest, and how many were up till now, and also with the other programs?
Project-based learning.
Project-based learning, I want to understand how many kids were affected, because it's now almost half of your staff, but what are we doing in terms of the percentage or something of our students?
Right, well, Tammy can tell you about the Quest numbers, I don't have them off the top of my head, but our Project Lead the Way numbers, we have all three strands running, we have biomedical, the engineering, and the health sciences, and so we probably have total in that, within those classes, probably getting close to 200 kids counting Quest. Tammy, how many do you have in that right now?
And how many did you have at the beginning, because I'm trying to think about growth?
When we started, I think we had 60 in the sophomore class and 40 in the freshman class, then we added, and some of, we've had attrition, we've had moving, we've had, it just doesn't work for some people. We graduated 32 seniors this year. We have our strongest, our largest classes are will be sophomore class, and we have 50, I think 54 out of 65 remaining in the program. Our freshman numbers are extremely low, one of our biggest biases has been one-to-one technology, and now everybody's one-to-one. And so that's bit a little bit. We are, we've had kids visit the schools, we've had a marketing campaign, we've invited Hickory and Pershing over for a glorious half a day, and they came over and visited with us, but our numbers are still low, and by low, I mean, less than 20.
Yeah, but it's supposed to be small, so it can't just.
It is, but that hurts as a freshman, I mean, for my freshman, I think however, once we get started next year, the students are going to start talking, and it's going to be, I want to do that, I want to be there. So our sophomores, juniors, and seniors are still pretty strong for next year, I don't have exact numbers, I apologize.
No, that's good, no, I don't need exact, I'm going to give.
But the freshmen are my biggest concern.
So those 10 people, teachers that you have associated in Quest, are they exclusively Quest, or are they doing some nonQuest things too?
They're doing, they're doing nonQuest as well, so.
They take regular classes?
Because I couldn't make those numbers match, I'm like, wow, that's a really good, I can't be right.
Yeah, they're doing, they're doing both.
Okay, very good.
And you know I'm incredibly supportive of Quest, Project Lead the Way, and the academy concept. My question is maybe more strategic than tonight, I'm not sure, but one of my concerns is more is not always better, and is there a saturation, saturation?
Satu- which is, yes, there is.
Is there a saturation level of, that all of a sudden they start competing against each other within the school? I'm supportive, and don't take that as, I just.
But you realize we have that now.
I know.
I mean, with the way we do our scheduling now, we have teachers competing for kids now.
Yeah.
So I'm not, to me, that's not a huge concern.
Well, I'm thinking about college and career, another academy comes for small learning, and you end up with five or six of them. Does that dilute teachers from the standpoint, I'm not trying to throw water on a fire at all, because I'm very supportive of academy concept and all that, I just, at what point do you have a point of no return, or diminishing return?
Well, our vision is for every kid to be in an academy.
Of some sort.
Yes, yeah, so that would be.
I think the total population is.
Do you mean every at Glendale, or every in high school?
Well, I honestly, Jill, I just worry about Glendale High School.
Well, I would like you to think more broadly.
At Glendale High School, we would like to have every student to be a part of a small learning, a smaller learning community, and I believe that. And we've looked at some of the pros and cons for that, and once a kid gets in an academy, are they locked in, you know, we've kind of looked at all of that, but, you know, the whole concept of career exploration is not ever going to hurt any kid. They might just choose the wrong academy, but then, you know, we'll figure out how to make the necessary changes for students to meet their learning needs. So that's our vision at Glendale, for every teacher and every student to be involved in a small learning community.
Thank you. And when you, this is terminology, but when you say academy, that could be an academy, and that could be an academy, and these things could be academy, and they all fall under academies.
She's talking about like eight acad, eight to 10 academies.
Yeah, you could have like a health sciences academy, and then you have multiple career pathways, like five or six, whether it's, I think it's careers within health sciences, I think it's medical and EMT.
And part of our discussion with our team of teachers, it was really hard not to jump ahead and look at the structure, and to start defining academies, but we don't want to jump that far ahead, because we want to make sure that we have the belief system and what every kid needs and all that in place before we start necessarily defining academies. But it was really hard when we were talking not to like start jumping out with ideas of this would be really cool, and that would be really cool. Well, we may think it might be cool, but Abby might not think it's cool, and she might not want to have anything to do with it, so we don't want to start defining things that maybe kids really are not totally going to buy into. So we feel like we need to really vet through that process about getting student input and our community input before we necessarily define how many academies, what are the academies going to look like, I think in general, when we've gone around and we've seen that most of the schools that go with this approach have a business-type academy, have a health sciences-type academy, but, you know, just.
It's kind of like a college model?
Yeah, those are, those are some similar academies that we would see, but we also, I want to be unique to Glendale as well, so I don't want to just copy someone else's model, I want it to be what Glendale kids and Glendale community want they want it to be.
Well, you have demonstrated what you were supposed to tonight, which is Glendale's readiness.
Thank you.
So you've demonstrated that, so I appreciate all your time sticking around to.
She's kind of our go-to girl.
She's a good one, she's a good one.
She had a good project for.
Yes, she did, it was amazing.
I think you may have just answered, because one of my questions, I hope I'm not stealing anything from Garrett here before he gets up here, but the thought of the, like you said, business academy, whatever, is that, is this sort of a pilot so that you can take it and take it to Parkview and take it to Hillcrest, so they have a.
Did you not say?
I don't know, that'd be, that'd be Dr. Dunwin, that'd be Dr. John and Dr. Dunwin, I don't want to speak for anyone.
They're giving you a chance to answer my question then.
He's going at the back, in the back door, isn't he?
It's not a definitive replication that you're going to take somewhere else, it's just specifically.
It's a process to engage a local school.
At Parkview, Central.
Yeah, honestly, I see, the proof of concept idea would be that a freshman academy might be replicable to another school, but it might look a different pathway. So part of it might be.
Or a business academy could be all, okay.
But my thought, if it works like we think it's going to, you would do it at the.
Okay. This is probably way, way down too far into the weeds, all right, so with that ahead, why the term academy? In some ways, academy seems to be the broader inclusive, like Glendale academies, the whole thing. Is there a distinction to be drawn besides terminological between an academy and a learning community, for example, which is, you know, sort of the kind of sexy language in higher ed, right, where it's all about learning communities of one kind or another? So are they different?
Wow, that's a good question, I don't.
I think they're all smaller learning communities, and we did actually spend some time with our team of teachers talking about it, and we honestly really don't want to call it academies at Glendale High School, but just for ease of presentation and trying to get everyone on the same page, no, this is what they're talking about. We've kind of used the terms that are, I guess, buzzwords, so to speak, I don't really know what else to say, it's easier to say academy than small learning community, it's just fewer syllables.
Not the way you all talk.
Lots of acronyms, they're going, just make them acronyms. I think it's more, I think it is more buzzword-ish, right, than it's kind of the trend. We've had professional learning communities, small learning communities, schools within a school, I mean, those are all the same terms, right?
We've already, and like I said, we didn't want to get too far down the weeds, but we were going, okay, we have Quest at GHS, what else could we, and then we thought, okay, no, that's getting too far ahead in the structures, and we really need to stay down here in the, why are we doing this, and how are we going to build this before we start throwing a name on it, and all of that kind of thing? So I think it's just for ease of presentation right now.
It makes me think of teaming in the middle school, teaming is just the way to use small learning communities. To me, this is one iteration of that high school.
That's what I thought, I thought, this is the Green Team.
Yes, exactly. The Green Eagles were.
The toast is around base.
The Green Eagles, absolutely, Pershing parent.
So that would be a negative thing that I want to say about this, and I don't mean to call it out as a negative, it's just a potential that I'm thinking about, because I went to a school where I had opportunities to do internships, starting in junior high and high school, and I worry that if we make each of these non-academies too narrow, I mean, we're talking about young kids, and I want them to have opportunities to consider broad things. I've met several young people who've talked, just, it's really inspiring to listen to them talk about what they gained from their experience, but I think to myself, I am someone who knew when I was 11 and 12 what I wanted to be, and that's exactly what I was, but there's a whole bunch of kids out there who aren't in that category, and I want to make sure we do not overly narrow their experiences and options, and I just want you to, you probably already thought of that.
We want the same thing, Joe.
You're ahead of me, I'm sure, but I wanted to.
I mean, we want the same thing, and that's already something that's come up, about how, how do we guide that student that really doesn't have a clue, and what if they get into the wrong pathway, academy, small learning, a community, how do we help navigate that student? And so, so I don't have the answer right now.
No, but I just want you to be thinking about which you are, so I appreciate that.
I think that's a delicate balance, because currently, a lot of them have no experience, right? But you don't want to over-correct to, we picked you as a plumber, or we picked you as this, right? I mean, that's the balance.
Particularly if it's in a field that is so rapidly changing, or even what, dissolving.
And I think we want students to have the same experience that Abby did, and find their own passion, something that we may not even know about, and, you know, who knew that Abby was going to put together this amazing project that raised thousands of dollars for the Women's Respite?
I would say to that, from a student perspective, a lot of my friends, like I did nonprofit work, I meant to do marketing, but I ended up doing nonprofit, and I know that I don't want to do that with my career, I loved working with them, and they're all wonderful people, but I can't live that way, like, that's a different lifestyle than I plan on living. So that, not to be.
You've admitted anything.
I understand.
That was a valuable experience for me, because now I know that, although I love volunteering, that I can't be an executive in one of those companies, because it's so hard and stressful to me personally, other people love it. And then my friends, one worked with Chef Wes at Metropolitan Farmer, another went to Realtor, and now she's going, moving to Florida, and she's still going to be working with that company in Florida. So a lot of my friends learned about the places that they wanted to be, and some of them aren't, that they just really didn't like it, and I think we all said all year, no matter what, if you like it or if you don't, you're getting a valuable experience that you wouldn't have had otherwise, and now you don't have to go to college and study nonprofit work, and then find out after four years when you go into the field that you don't like it, you wasted four years. So I thought that that was valuable for all of us, whether or not we liked what we did, we learned something, and we're all a lot better off because of it, and going into college ready to try new things or continue doing what we were doing.
Well, thank you. Get Hillcrest up?
All right. Let's move on.
Thanks for that.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, we are ready for Mr. Gary Moore to come up and talk a little bit about Hillcrest,
and how to introduce his guests.
Basically said me more.
They won.
One thing I learned, one thing I learned a long time, is never follow Natalie. So, but actually, our take on this is a little bit different than what hers is, because I think we have different needs at Hillcrest than what Glendale will have in some of our other high schools. We have a Missouri College Advisor in our school, and we recently got the first year results back, how many kids went to college, how many didn't at Hillcrest. Forty-seven percent went to a two- or four-year, fifty-three percent did not. What happened to those fifty-three percent of kids who graduated? That's my question. So, I'm looking more at career exploration and career pathways, and we have embedded career pathways already, but we also have a great place to go at our disposal with OTC.
That's right.
Okay. So, I've met with Matt, Dr. Dawson and I, and Tammy, she's already left, we went to a meeting with OTC and SRC today, with companies, what they're looking for, and our kids don't know what they don't know.
That's right.
Okay, freshmen don't know what's out there, so our idea is to put every freshman through a career, a career pathway, a career of education their freshman year, and then we can lead them into different pathways. And some of those will be in-house, some of those, some of those will be used with OTC. OTC right now has 20 different programs or pathways that our kids can go into, okay? That we can use A-plus money for down the road for those kids. So, my idea is to piggyback those things. If, the way we sold that, or I found out from our staff, is we have PLCs on Fridays, we want to talk to each PLC, okay? So, CTE was one of the representatives, which is Courtney Dameron, you know, from our fax department, and the, do you know what the most, the most popular class at OTC is for extra, for their program? It is early childhood, which she teaches. So, why is this important to us?
Well, I teach early childhood at the track at Hillcrest, and so I teach three different courses. And so, we start out with an early childhood development, and then we have an advanced early childhood development, and then we send them out to an internship, and so they can go to daycares and preschools and things like that. And OTC is doing a very similar program, and I have lots of kids that don't know if they want to go to OTC half-day, or if they want to take the program with me, and I feel like those are types of choices they shouldn't have to make, in a sense. I feel like Hillcrest has a lot of the pieces to the puzzle. We have OTC at our disposal, we have these great teachers teaching these awesome classes that can lead the kids into the pathways, but we haven't put the puzzle together yet. And I think doing these pathway programs is a way that we're not going to be reinventing the wheel, we're not going to be making up classes. The courses are already there, and it's just a buy-in for the kids, for them to see that their graduation isn't their final goal, that it is a milestone to the next piece of it. And those numbers of the amounts of kids who aren't going to a university, where are they going, are just staggering. And I think that a lot of them, if we can catch them as freshmen, and we can say, here are the opportunities, and then the amazing program of A-plus as well, coming in together, and showing them all of the different places they can go and the things that they can do, and not pushing college, 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 but career readiness, and all of these different types of things that you can do, and we can prepare you after you graduate to start in a job field, and not, oh, you have to go to these different types of universities. And I think that Hillcrest is a great place, we need something like this, we need some type of a program and a focus at Hillcrest, you know, we've got Quest at Glendale, we've got IB Central, we've got Kickapoo U, we've got the Parkview Leadership, and we don't have anything at Hillcrest. And our kids deserve to have a program like that, that really puts them on the right path.
Oh, we're in.
We are in.
So, and we have some embedded programs, and we do have a couple.
We can say...
We have JROTC there, which in some schools is an academy. We also have an award-winning journalism.
Yes.
Right there as well. So, we have Project Lead the Way, we're adding computer science to that next year as well, as well as engineering, the things that Glendale has, so those are already in effect as well. So, that's kind of our idea. What we would do is offer that course to every freshman, and, you know, show them what's out there, show them these 20 different pathways, which in two years may be another 10 added, because things are constantly changing. So, that's academy, we had trouble with that as well. We're looking at a pathway to kids succeed in finding out what their interest is.
We are too.
You know, I think it's terrific. I would be curious, it's not your primary goal, but would you anticipate that the percentage of students going on to a two- or four-year college or university would increase as a byproduct of this?
It could, but not necessarily. So, one of the conversations we had today at SRC is, you send us, or you could get somebody in our apprentice program, which Desi now is pushing, because there was a Desi representative there today as well, you get them to our apprentice program, we hire them in the summer, they're paid, we hire them after school, and we pay for their education. So, what, a hundred thousand dollars in education?
I'd want to see a cap.
They pay us. So, now, and a point that was made in that meeting is, you know, we've got all these kids that are financially in debt, you know, from going and for it, and, you know, you become an electrician, or, you know, bricklayer, whatever, and apprentice program, you pay...
Exactly, make more than four-year college grad.
Yeah.
Exactly, right.
Yeah, I give the example of my middle brother, who could not read well, but he's a great math, and, you know, he's a machinist, foreman, making a hundred fifty thousand a year, and he could barely read coming out, but he got in the right programs, vocational tech. So, you have Diesel, which we got Prime here looking for workers, we got welding, I think they mentioned today, Lebanon had a welding pilot program going on with partners up there in Lebanon. So, they're, the businesses are starting to look to grow their own, is the term from Dr. Juggman, you know, let's get them in here, let's get good people, invest in them, and keep them.
I just want to commend you.
But our kids don't know that even exists.
That's right.
But they don't all have to go to college to succeed, and I really appreciate you focusing on that part of it. If, if there are some who that becomes a great opportunity for, because we show them that they're capable of that, great, but we've got to acknowledge that that's not the pathway for everyone, and I really appreciate that.
Nor, nor is it representative of the needs in our community.
Yeah.
All right.
Well, it was shorter than hers, but you did well.
Well, Jill, you know me.
She did what she could, but that was great too.
And I love, one of our district's best resources is OTC in our community, and as well as the A-plus program, and so I love the conversation about helping students maximize both of those opportunities for their benefit.
And what we found with the A-plus program, and some of the, right now, you can't go to OTC till you're junior, and a lot of kids don't know the programs, they're in them as freshmen, and they lose the 2.5, the grade average, and the attendance factor before they ever get there, they never knew it existed.
So, when you teach them in the freshman program...
Right, but this is what you got to work for.
That's right.
It redesigns everything. A-plus should be a freshman focus, not a sophomore, junior, senior focus, and it helps align to the careers, gets them prepared, here's the track to your free education.
Yeah. And some of these programs in OTC, they can have associate degrees coming out.
Very.
So, that's our thing.
Awesome.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
There you go.
We're saturated, we're saturated. We've learned all, we've learned. That's right.
Okay, so we're going to kind of wrap up. As you can see, I first want to thank Gary and Natalie, as you can tell, they and their teachers and Tammy are passionate about this, and so it's going to be fun to watch how this grows, and it's also neat to see how unique it was at each school, it's going to look different.
Yes.
I think that's good.
The passion was subtle, everything else.
So, lastly, Dr. Wen's going to talk a little bit about how are we going to tell if this works or not, right?
Yeah.
If we're going to get questions.
Thanks. Evaluating success, really, we were thinking about getting, just getting lots of feedback, getting feedback from the academy participant, from the student, from the staff, from the business partnerships that are developed, from patrons, from parents, really trying to see how engaging, how relevant, how personal the process is. And hopefully, going back to the slides that you saw earlier, from our survey engagement slides, really, that's, that culminating, how many students are engaged, how many are passionate, how many are interested, how many are focused on what they're doing. So, that's really some of those things that we're, that we're looking forward to seeing grow. So, that's kind of, there are things that we'll look at to evaluate that over time.
I know nobody wants me to say anything, but I would definitely love to see more focus placed on measurable outcomes, and if you take a group that's in the traditional base track, or you take a freshman population group that's not receiving the treatment, which is the academy exploration or whatever, and somehow measure their engagement over time. But I think we, aside survey and feedback, that's about continual improvement, but that's not measuring, is it working? Is it doing what, the why, we started off on slide one. So, whether that's the system that's already in place, that we just start it as a benchmark to move us forward, and to look at it school by school and program by program, or whether that's also, I mean, we do other assessment tools here in the district with asking about student satisfaction, are they satisfied? I mean, that's different than engagement, and anyway, so, and there's academic engagement measures, so there's all different kinds of measures that, besides just feedback for continual improvement, that I would love to see us use.
I think that's part of the strategic planning work, is what are their actual outcomes? And that's how, determines the design, right, of what that academies or whatever you call it model looks like. Is it a graduation rate move? Is it a student test score move? Is it a BCT move?
And even moving the needle on the report that you got about, you know, or, yeah, I mean, maybe not how many go to college, but answering the question, where did the rest of those go? You know, where, are they plugged in or are they lost? Yeah. There's a lot of different tools.
Question, I guess, Mike or John, relationship with GoCaps? Because we've talked a lot about the same strands. What, what impact need from a standpoint of GoCaps?
Great question.
Does that impact? I think this helps scale out, right, the vision that we've kind of started, right? So, what we've, what we've got is, I think we believe in small learning environments, connection to communities, career pathways, career exploration, but we've got Kickapoo U doing it, we've got Quest doing it, we've got PLTWs, we've got GoCaps. This is the time to start to bring those together and figure out what are the communities, right? GoCaps is completely driven by the community's expectation, the local community, right? What are the jobs in the areas? That's how that model's driven. The other things are kind of driven outside of that, PLTW may be outside of that, JROTC might be out of that, so it's an all-encompassing conversation about what are the careers and what are the pathways that our kids need exposure to? Do they exist in our community? GoCaps, if they exist in our community, that's where they go. If not, how do we get them access to the other things that don't exist in our community? So, I see them folding together at some point. The interest, the, obviously, the element that's different is this would be focused only on SPS kids. GoCaps is a regional approach to the work, because it's so important for our businesses that we do educational regional, we don't just do it in a, in a school system in isolation.
Well, GoCaps is a resource to these academies that makes, that makes the academies work.
Helps fulfill, right, some of those things, right?
Yeah.
And those continue to expand, I think, as these roll, right?
But I think, I think one of the other challenges that you're going to have in addition to finding the fit of GoCaps is that, and I don't think we can underscore enough this notion of focus and trying to kind of lasso all this stuff and get it all to be in synchronicity, because this is, it, there seem to be a lot of things happening, you, you mentioned them, John, and that's what I'm concerned about, is that, that there's just a lot of special interest things going on. This is what happens in colleges and universities especially, is you'll get people with a special interest, and they start to develop their own little thing, and it kind of spins out of control. One of the things, one of the things, but, but it's led by someone with a passion for it. I think that, I think that the anecdote about, about Quest is really interesting, how it started three years ago as being fairly innovative, cutting-edge, and one-to-one computing. The whole district is that way now, and Quest has to keep reinventing itself, it has to continue to innovate, and that's going to be the challenge for all of these programs that begin innovative, and that innovation has a half-life that, that really is reducing fast, and it's, it's reducing faster and faster all the time. So, I think, I think that part of the challenge of putting this plan together will be a strong core, a clear focus, but built-in flexibility. I don't know.
Some local autonomy, right? Because that's the complexity we have, and it's a lot easier in one high school town than when you have a five-high school town, and everybody, Glendale wants their identity, Hillcrest wants, and we want them to have their identity, so you have to have some local autonomy at site level, but core expectations.
Well, and then you, yeah, you still have a core of, of three Rs, you know, just general education, but then you have this enhancement and this enrichment and this engagement that really makes, really makes high school experience worthwhile.
Personal, right? And choice actually exists, right?
But it's so important to have that core still of those, those courses, because we're about developing citizens.
And I, I think that core is key, and in some ways, it triggers what Kathy said earlier, it's about coherence, because coherence is that center that holds, and around that center that holds, there's all kinds of customization that would fit Glendale, that would fit Hillcrest, that might eventually kick into the Parkview, Central, et cetera. But the coherence is key. That keeps, that, that lassos it, to use your term, and keeps it from being just another shiny object, right, that flies around, and they all kind of pile up, but don't add up to anything. And I think all of these, if we maintain that coherence to our strategic commitments, that's when they begin to add up to something really special.
And I think, what I really think is exciting about it too, is it gets us, because I totally believe we need to transform and get out of the quote, "education business." We're in life preparation, we're in career building, and it's helping kids be successful in life. Education is how we do that. If we don't get out of that, we're going to get, I mean, from legislative, from all those places, we get so tunnel vision, and to me, what you guys are doing is just open up that winders to a much broader look at what we're doing and how we're preparing kids for life. Not that they passed an ACT test with a score, or a math score with a test, they are prepared to be successful in life, whatever that is. I don't, and that's, I don't care, I don't care what they want to do, I want them to do what they want to do and be prepared to do that. And I think this is the beginning of opening up that window as opposed to that narrow focus of just focusing on, they passed their test, they got through this, they got their grades, they graduated, now they're off doing something else, and we, we're done. I don't think, I don't believe that that's what we're doing. That's not what our mission is, I don't think.
That's right.
And so, I, I'm excited about that, the whole concept of what we're doing for kids, getting them prepared for life, not just to graduate.
So, it's great, so, and that's what we would end with right now, the process is, we invest in a process to bring the community around, a conversation about the right outcomes, about the right model at those schools, and they feed it back to us and determine, are we ready to move forward? And they've defined the cores, right, of small relationships and career pathways and experiences for all kids and those things. And it's not really being defined by central office, it's putting it out to the groups of teachers and parents and kids and leaders to develop what they want, because that's where their ownership comes, and that's where it will be successful. So, that's kind of the next step that we'll be bringing recommendations on, so.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for cutting up.
We planted that applause.
I was going to say, at eight forty-five. At eight forty-five.
I hope you can talk really fast.
Okay, Mike, we have to get done soon.
All right, so superintendent, you want me to go?
Yes.
Your attendance update? Penny Rector is here, our new chief of HR, so hello. Well, you can clap for her now. And she started yesterday working with Lisa, and transition's going great, so we're glad to have her already on the team and working early with this, so. And I'll end it at that. So, you wanted a quick update, so we'll call it good, but you want me to...
Oh, no, we're good, we're good.
Okay. Legislative update?
The only thing that I would note is tomorrow, the tax commission hearing from four to six at the chamber, it's that group that's going around the state, assigned by the governor, and can collect feedback, and it's made up mostly of legislators, I think, but they're going around to collect feedback on tax structure, tax credit structures, to present a report back to the governor, I think, soon. So, I know Jerry plans to testify, I'll be there, as well as many others, so we'll, we'll be engaged.
Yep. Okay.
What are you going to say?
He could read it, he's got it.
I've got it written down somewhere. Basically, protect, protect education funding.[1780.82]
Basically, protect, protect education funding. What, you play with the taxes, that's not my problem. Keep funding education, and the social services that impact education, because there's not one thing. It's interrelated. Everything's kind of related to each other, whether it's transportation, social services, it impacts us. So, that's, it's not a real fire and brimstone speech at all.
I think the only other thing legislatively does, like I mentioned last time, full attention turns to the federal level right now, and we're talking about budget and the proposals that are out there. I think Jerry will be in DC this coming month, and I'll be there in July with ALSA to do advocacy. So, it's full court to federal for the next 60, 90 days, as we go through their budget work.
Board comments? Leadership summit?
I did see, I've got it on my phone before I came in, 100% of our buses pass the Missouri Highway 100, we got 100%. I think for a district our size, it's just every bus, I think those just Knicks, and Springfield, that, I think, how many buses they've got through, we've got.
And you can, you can miss it with a tail light.
A tail light not working, or something. I found that astounding. I, I just find that, we just have a great transportation.
That's exactly, exactly right.
I appreciate you saying that, because I think so.
Yep.
I'll just make a comment before I open this up. We had leadership summit, MSBA leadership summit, that Tim and Denise and I were able to attend. Got an award, you got an award, Outstanding Board of Education, Board of Education and Physical and Environmental Resources, that was presented to us. Congratulations on you guys for a lot of our facilities planning, and a lot of the things, not just facilities, but security, safety, a very broad topic. You got it done good. I talked to one of the evaluators. He said, you guys, he said, you guys just really hit it out of the park. He said it was an excellent submission. Yeah. It was great. And that was, we were fortunate, had the opportunity to pick it up for you all. So.
Yes, thank you for being here.
Tim, Denise, anything you want to say about the summit?
Go ahead, you go first.
Oh, my goodness.
Because I may just be able to say ditto.
Yeah. Public education is the largest employer in the country. I just thought that, I, I, that never really quite occurred to me, but when you think about that, that we are part of that, that gives us an awful lot of clout. You need to say that tomorrow, and you're, we, public education is largest employer, is very likely the largest employer in Missouri. Let's see, was affirmed that we dodged a lot of bullets in the legislature this, this year, but that, that doesn't mean the boat, they're out of bullets. They're gonna start firing next year, too. So, you know, the, we survived this year, but the fight will begin. The NSBA president is really dynamic. In addition to saying that, that public education's the largest employer in the United States, he was also talking about the class of 2030, and that the class of 2030, now, in his speech, he said, it's the kindergartners entering this fall. No, it was, it's first graders entering this fall. He needs to update his speech. But, but, yeah, and, and so, if you think we're, if, if you think we're not about the future, think about that, is that already 2030 is in our buildings. 2031 is fixing to come to our building, which is just, to me, fascinating. And that, and that likewise, so, so, you know, we, we promote innovation and progress in 21st century methods and all that, which makes sense, and since this is after all the 21st century. But the other thing that he was talking about is that there is a 21st century school board as well. And he listed a 20th century school board attributes or characteristics, and then had a comparison of, of 21st century characteristics. And I would say that while we are not on our, while we are not there, we are on our way. And for more information about that, you go to the MSBA website. His slides are on there, if you go to the conference presentations. They're, they're great slides. That's it, Denise.
Yeah, okay.
Thanks for sharing.
Well, I mean, a lot of things that we heard, and Tim and I were in a couple of sessions together, and it was interesting to hear the speakers talk about things that we better be thinking about as a district. And if we don't have a place, we need to be thinking about it. And Tim and I looked at each other and go, we're there, we're there, we're getting there. So, that was very fun, especially about virtual K-12 programs, that those for-profit programs that would like to come in and take our state dollars, that we need to get ahead of that. Tim and I looked at each other and go, okay, launch, you know, we're, we're in that, you know, headed in that direction. Also, we were cautioned in several meetings about, although we may be excited about fully funded, fully funded formula, but don't spend it until it is appropriated. And I don't think it was to say, oh, they say they're gonna do it, but they're not. It was just to be cautious, because there's so many factors that go on. And then, another session that some of the districts, and it was all, it was a variety of districts, small, medium, large, and all talking about their budgets, and, and how they do their budget, set their budget. And I felt very comfortable and very confident in what we're doing, because many just started their budget process in May. We've been talking about it since January, or certainly, I guess, officially in our, or in our meetings in, in March. But I think we know, every month, when we get a budget report update, we know where we are. We know, you know, where we are with expenditures and revenues. So, we're, we're kind of on, I think, ahead of game. And one district, they, they mentioned that their budget process is kind of scientific, but a lot of guessing. You know, I don't think they, I don't think they have, and I'll say kudos to Missouri, they have the process that we have in place that helps us to know where on track we need to go. And so, we're here tonight, and we had full budget discussion, and have three weeks yet to ask questions, and think about, and suggest changes. So, that was, I think, but a lot of great things came from that. I think the one that, that kind of stuck with me was that one of our speakers, and I, and I'm not sure if it was our legislator that was there, that said this, I think it was, Representative Sean Rhodes, am I correct? And he said, one thing about public education, he encouraged us to continue our advocacy state, and then move on to the federal level. But he said, when you think about public schools, we are a zero-rejection institution. And when he said that, I thought, okay, what does he mean by that? He said that we take students, whether we think we can afford them or not. In other words, we take a student, when a student comes to us, we take them on, whether we think our funding is adequate. We take students when they are ill, very ill, or, you know, have chronic illnesses. We take them when they're physically challenged, they're behaviorally challenged, they're homeless, they're emotionally challenged, they're mobile, they move from school to school, whether they have excellent grades, they're gifted, and maybe bored with the daily process, or they're students that do, you know, have poor grades, some that love school, some that hate school. Doesn't matter what they are, or what they bring to us. We take all of them, or there are many other non-public, you know, schools that set criteria and parameters, guidelines for whether they take a child. And if they take a child into their institution, they may not keep him or her very long, depending upon how they respond. That was just, I mean, it was just kind, it was, just to remember the hard work we do with, but it was interesting, the term zero-rejection institution. There's not many of those around. So, that's, was exciting to me to hear.
Just a couple of things, and it'll be real quick about Representative Rhodes. I mean, he, he personally stopped the choice bill. Personally. He was chair of the Rules Committee. He said, I'm not passing it through, I don't like it, it's not good, it's not good for kids. And he just sat on it. I mean, he.
Where's he from? Former school board member.
West Plains. West Plains, Hallow County. And, yeah, former school board member, and he stuck his neck out for public ed, big time, for us. So, we gave him a lot of kudos for that. The only other thing, one of the things, I'm not gonna talk a lot about it, but there's a lot of discussion among boards about professional development for boards. We expect professional, professional learning, sorry, call it professional learning for teachers, for administrators, for everybody, but not for boards, so much. And one board, in fact, put in policy that you will have so many hours of professional learning during your three-year term. And I just thought that was very interesting. I mean, we do a lot of it anyway, we don't count, oh, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, we don't count it over three years. So, it was just interesting that.
Way over 10 hours.
Oh, yeah. So, but, I mean, they, they codified it and formalized it. The only other thing that I would do is you're gonna get, at this meeting, this is kind of our delegate assembly meeting, where we do the governance, and Tim and Denise and I were able to be delegates for that. That's where MSBA talks about their advocacy positions. They have a draft together, we went through that during the time.
Is that from a legislative approach?
Yes, yeah, yeah, legislating platform.
State and federal.
Have it here for state and federal. I'll send this to everybody, so hopefully, we can make comments on it. This is very similar to what I'd like for us to do.
That long?
No, 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 not, not, no, 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 no.
Yowza!
No, there's only half of it, half of it. And there are things that we wouldn't necessarily address. My thought was, we would have a platform, so when any of us go to Jeff City, we know what we're, we're talking about. This is MSBA's, this is not ours.
Well, we've already got started on that, haven't we? Because we've got a view.
Prior, legislative priorities, we're not really, resolution.
It was a step in that direction.
Yes, you're right.
You'd be able to compare that to when you see this.
MSBA wants comments, if you have thoughts about what they're proposing. We have an opportunity to do that. I'll get it to you guys, hopefully, in the July board meeting, if you have something, get it to me. To draft, it is purely a draft.
Are you saying if we agree with the positions they're taking, or if we agree with them being so specific in what they're advocating?
If you have comments on what they say. I'm not gonna, yeah, it's a comment period that we have for every school board in Missouri. And all of them are looking at it. So, they're gonna take all the comments, some of it's wordsmithing, some of it may be form or some substance, it just depends.
I've been a part of those large group wordsmithing sessions. That was so fun.
And I'm not, you know, and I'm, I'm not gonna say that we want to do that, it's gonna get done, but they're gonna take all the comments they got, and the advocacy committee will then draft up a final platform statement for MSBA. So, those that are going to the hill can have marching orders to do that, so, to do that. So, you'll be getting that here pretty soon, to do that. Okay. We had a chance to hear Dasty, which was great, what they, their thoughts are. They're getting ready to change their top 10 by 20, and get rid of that terminology, which, I liked it, but it's kind of got the scorecard mentality to it of kind of assessment. Goals aren't changing, but they're trying to come up with a new.
It's a little loaded now.
A new quote slogan, I'll call it that, that really is more 21st century, so to speak. So, with the same results, hopefully. So, we'll get there, because 2020 is not that far away. Okay. Any other board comments?
Spoken.
None?
I'm afraid my computer's gonna be dead.
Mine's about to die.
Kathy can take it verbally.
Upcoming meetings, any upcoming meetings we need to know about?
I think so.
I think just June 27th.
Yep.
Are you gonna, we need certain people to be conspicuous.
Exhort meeting.
Oh, okay.
Unfortunately, I won't be here, so.
We will excuse you.
The policy hasn't been approved, so.
Well, guess what's gonna happen.
Thank you.
That's already in policy.
All right. It's already in there now.
Some requests.
Plus deltas, don't forget your plus deltas, put them up there for this meeting. We do need to go into close executive session, so that the board meet in the executive session, discuss personnel, collective bargaining, and audit findings, as provided in Section 610 on 21, Section 3, 9, 13, and 17, or is MO? Could I get them?
Second.
Elena 1, Tim 2.
You can take your pick.
Elena 1, Tim 2.
Yep, okay.
That was great.